Hi there, I'd like to call the meeting of August 28th, 2019, of the Willett City Council to Order, and please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming, and Kathy Rokal?
Yes, Councilmember Funny, here. Rodriguez, President.
Yes.
Ms. Snow. Oh, excuse me. She's missing.
Yeah.
Mary Gonzalez.
Here, alright. Public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken. So, anybody from the public would like to speak on anything not on the agenda? Okay, going, going, gone. Alright. And I was asked to take item 10A out of order, given some time constraints that one of our speakers has, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. And that is the Department of Recommendations, Discussion Possible Action Committing to the Completion of the Groundwater Management Plan as Required by Proposition 1 Grant Funding in the City's Groundwater Project and authorize the City Manager to execute related documents. Do you think this is yours Andrea?
I don't know.
Alright.
I'm gonna take this one. Good evening. Council, Mr. Mayor. I usually get a big part of the meeting to write notes.
I was told you wanted, you were up and ready to go.
Ready to go. So, I think the first time I presented this project to council was in 2014, when we were coming off of the really dry 2013. So, for those of us that aren't familiar with the history, in December of 2012, we got 20 inches of rain. And in 2013, we basically got zero rain. So, in early 2014, the reservoir started to reach a very critical level where water was at a shortage and the city was in an emergency situation with respect to the ability to provide safe and sanitary drinking water to the city residents. So, from that came this groundwater project. And this is the next step in the groundwater project, which is outlined in the staff report. To reiterate the purpose, the primary purpose of this project, the primary purpose is to provide a secondary source to supply city residents with water in case of an emergency. The emergency in this case, in this scenario that started it was the drought. But there are a number of issues that could arise, including fire, vandalism, a seismic event that compromises the single line that feeds the city from the surface water treatment plant. So, this part of the project specifically is, in 2014, we did a Elias replacement well and built a groundwater treatment plant. That currently supplies 330 to 340 gallons per minute of additional water. So, that has been in use sporadically over the last five years, four years I guess, once it got permitted, and it provides a supplement where we kind of get into the secondary purpose of the project, which is to reduce costs of treatment and also maintain better water quality by using the groundwater primarily during the summer, allowing the reservoirs to stay at a higher level, keeping the water cooler, avoiding algae blooms. I know we've had issues with algae blooms in the past. So, right now, we're at a point where the next part of the project is to take the pump that's in the Elias well, move it over to the new replacement well that we drilled two years ago, it's been almost two years now, that has good, has a good, provides a good production rate. And with those two wells, the idea is that there would be enough water provided by those two wells to support the city if one of these emergencies was. So, taking the pump from the Elias replacement well, moving it to what we've called the long 20 well is one part of it. Replacing the well, or the Elias replacement well pump with a larger pump that we can get, would allow us to get more water to the groundwater treatment plant, would give us a situation where we're not looking to meet peak demands because we know if there's an emergency, the city will be in conservation, will be in conservation mode, which the city proved that they could do back in 2014. So, as part of this, the current line that goes from the Elias replacement well to probably about halfway to the groundwater treatment plant is old Schedule 40 PVC that was installed at an unknown time and doesn't meet, it's too small, really, really not the kind of pipe we want to rely on for this type of service. So, back in February, the city applied for a grant to fund this entire project, 1.1 million. The state came back and said, we'll fund half of it. We're not gonna fund the whole thing, but we'll fund half of it. And, which is about $551,000. And, which is a substantial amount of funding towards this project. With that, with that in mind, one of the conditions of receiving that $551,000 is that the city commit to conducting a, putting together a groundwater management plan. So, in this case, since this groundwater basin is considered very low priority, meaning it's not on, the concept is there's a bunch of water under the ground here, so it's not on the state's, you know, it's not considered of one high importance like, say, let's say the Ukiah Valley. So, it doesn't really fit in perfectly in the box that they have because it's mainly a condition of the grant. So, what we're here tonight to ask is that the city commit to undertaking and preparing a groundwater management plan. It gives the city access to this 550,000 plus any additional funding that would come out of this same grant source moving forward. It also, I know there are a lot of questions about how, how the valley would be impacted, who are the stakeholders in a project like that, or like this? And this process would involve those stakeholders and would require public participation and transparency, and everybody would be on board. And it also provides a mechanism to do monitoring and obtain data from various ground, various wells in the valley that are currently monitored, would be monitored, would be monitored as part of this process. And just to clarify, one of the things that has been, has been a question about this project for some time was whether or not it was a growth inducing task or project. And, two years ago, we went through this process of whether or not the, it would be a notice of exemption, we talked to Dusty at length about it, and did some research. Based on the source capacity study that we did for the division of drinking water, the only way the city increases the number of connections that are currently available is by increasing the store, the amount of storage within the distribution system. So, if the city were to go and start increasing tanks' sizes around, within the system, a 3 million gallon tank increased to a 5 million gallon tank, and so on and so forth, that would be considered growth inducing, and that would require a different level of environmental review, not the purpose of this project. Purpose of this project? Go ahead.
Along those lines, so let's say you, as we proceed forward, and let's assume we're not planning on changing our tanks, but along the way, as we're walking through this project, one of the tanks springs a leak and the next best replacement is a little bigger, would that induce this, or would that be considered a replacement emergency kind of thing?
I think that is a question for Dusty.
Okay.
No, no, I think it's a good question, and it's something, honestly, I don't, I don't have an answer to. I think you would err on the side of caution and conduct that more in-depth environmental review in that case.
This is just for redundancy purposes then, or?
This is just, that's why this project started, and that's why it's continuing on.
Is there anything else you want to present? I'm just hoping enough to.
My whole thing has been with this plan is the monitoring. And how are they going to monitor? Are they gonna put meters on each one of the wells to see how much water has been pumped out? Or what is, I mean, I don't understand what it says monitoring, I mean, I don't understand that. How's that gonna happen?
It happens exactly how you described it. Transducers in wells that measure the depth so that when the city, or whomever is pumping water, you'll see how the other wells react. So, if you, this, DWR currently monitors six?
Six.
They currently monitor six wells, and I believe they're all in this north end of the valley. So, there's some historical data already available. The city's been monitoring the two wells while Caltrans, Caltrans has been pumping for irrigation purposes, for their mitigation, so you'll see some reaction in the wells through that. And that's, that's a product of this, this plan. How are you gonna monitor? What are you gonna look at? What kind of data is going to come out of it? Who's, and it'll be available for everybody to see, and you'll be able to get a good, I'd say, get a better understanding of the, this basin than we have right now. And I, and honestly, that is part of this requirement, it's part of this funding, to get more, to get, essentially get more wells in the database so that, so that there is a better, there's, we continue to improve the amount of information we have so we improve our understanding of our groundwater resource.
Okay, I have, I have been for this for the simple reason that when we have a drought area, it would give us another source of water. But the re, somewhere in here in this, things that you have given us to read, it talks about recharging. And if you're in a drought, you're not gonna get a very good recharge. And, so what I'm concerned with is that with the monitoring that we do on our wells, that that's gonna tell the state that we can't, you know, use them as much because we're in a drought situation. And we're gonna, I thought that we were gonna use these wells to offset the amount of water that the rain didn't provide us up in the, up in the, on the hill. And, so is that not true?
That is, that's, that's the secondary purpose. The offsetting that in times when we're not in a drought, where I talked about leaving those reservoirs at a higher level during the summer for better water quality, so that it will offset, and it has been permitted, the Elias well, the Elias replacement well has been permitted to do just that. There's no condition of, it can only be used during an emergency. So, the first, the first part of the question about the state, the concern about drawdown, drawdown during the drought, I'm, I'm gonna, I think that's a, maybe it's partly a water rights question, also it'd be an emergency, it could be an emergency situation question. I don't think that you're going to get a, if you were in an actual emergency, I don't think there's gonna be a question of drawdown. You're gonna get some historical recharge numbers and, and historical reports, I think it was back in the eighties Farrar did, I think it was Farrar that did a report that said, this basin recharges, and I think the usage at that time was much greater than it is now, with about 50% of annual, of average annual rainfall. Is that a right number, 50%?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So, if we were to get, say, 35 inches of rain, we would expect full recharge of the base, the groundwater in this basin, roughly, that's roughly 75% of annual.
But, but the city would not own all of that for the simple reason, it says also in here that the ground, the overlay or the ground over, wherever, you know, water is there, and the state has bought just an awful lot of our valley, and so how is that gonna affect? Because they put in wells also for the wild animals and whatever. And, so they're going to be pulling water out of the valley to do their things along with the litigation. And, I'm just concerned that, that it's not gonna work the way that we thought it was gonna work.
I believe, I believe Caltrans is only irrigating for one or two more years. That's what.
I think that they completed it last fall.
So, their use of, their uses, their use of the wells is, is going to be minimal, even if they're.
Until they change their mind, because they do have a tendency to change their mind, the state does. Unless you're not aware of that, but we're aware of that.
So, the only, the only other aspect there is, if we're, if we're in an emergency situation and the drawdown, the, the use of water by the city is negatively impacting the city's neighbors, then I think it's, I think it's the city's responsibility to, to have a good understanding of that, and that's part of this process, whether or not that is an issue that needs to be addressed.
Anybody else?
So, my question has to do with the requirements to the state for fulfilling this plan ongoing. So, in order to receive the $550,000, you have to commit to a certain level of reporting to the state. Is that going to create an undue burden on the staff in your department to fulfill those requirements? Because the money isn't free, and you gotta do something for it.
Just, yes. I don't think that's real clear, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, I think it's a grant recording.
Right, but an ongoing recording as to the, as to the, what is, what, the data that's coming out of the monitoring, that's part of this plan. I do not, I don't see it as being very painstaking or arduous, like, the transducers that are put in, into the wells now, they'll, they Wi-Fi Bluetooth, Bluetooth is the right term, they, you can get the data wirelessly, and it comes, and you could transmit it. The thing is, since this doesn't fit in any specific box, that's why there were a lot of questions leading up to this, it's not, it's not a full-blown groundwater management plan like the Ukiah Valley is undertaking. This is an abbreviated version that is more of a monitoring plan. I don't see it as being a huge burden for staff. Andrea, may I argue that?
Yeah, the ongoing portion of it hasn't, it's, the groundwater management plan is what they're requiring, but they're not, they don't have ongoing requirements.
Excuse me, Andrea, can you speak into the microphone so that we can, it can be recorded for the.
The, the requirement of the grant is to prepare the groundwater management plan, and there aren't ongoing requirements to provide updates.
It's not to create an undue burden on your department, it's already tasked, tasked with a lot of stuff that you're juggling.
I, I don't see that as a problem with this groundwater.
Anybody else up here?
I just wanted to ask, is the whole reason to have this attachment one is just an example of?
Big Valley one.
Of a.
Big Valley, yes.
Yeah. So, none of that information is actually relevant to us. It's sort of just an example of how a sort of abbreviated version of a management plan would look?
Yeah, it was supplied by Department of Water Resources as an example.
Okay. So, this is the more condensed version, it's for a lower priority watershed, like ours?
Good.
Just that we're not in a drought right now, but when we are, we'll be glad that we took the time to do the work. It's a budgeted item. Seems like common sense to follow through with direction that we previously gave.
And I tend to agree with that, that when the people of Willetts who elected us turn on their taps, they expect water to come out, and we, and at the same time, it sounds like what the state's doing is if you want our money, you gotta do this reporting, and if we want to continue to get any potential more money for this sort of thing, then we continue. I had a kind of an aside question, not kind of related, but if Brook Trails decides to do wells in the valley down the road, is, that's a separate issue and wouldn't be affected? Or would they get the data? I guess the data would be open from the state to anybody that wants to.
Yes, and I would assume, depending on how this process works, that they would have, they would have to consult all stakeholders that were involved in this process.
So, the more data that's out there is kind of good for everybody, is kind of what I'm getting at, that when they hook up, because it sounds like the state may be pulling back, unless, like Larry says, they sneak back in. And this is to kind of look at our draw and make sure we're being good eggs, et cetera, and I get it, that's what the state wants us to do, and so.
Right. It's to have a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive, that everybody is aware of, and, you know, engaging the county will be important in this process. And there are some small districts, I believe, that, well, they have, so there's some little overlap here and there. But ultimately, you're, I think, you, the city may be getting out ahead of the requirements that are coming down the road. That's the other part of this, you know? So, and just to clarify, is my understanding, this, this is the city council approving this, going into, or approving the groundwater management plan as part, as part of this application process, and there will be a resolution requirement at some point to kick off the actual groundwater management.
Okay. And Pete, while you're still up there, is there anybody from the public that would like to ask a product question? Going, gone, okay? So, what we need is a.
An offer.
Motion to approve the commitment.
I saw move.
Go second?
Second motion.
Alright. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote?
Mr. Member Carr?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Andrea. Alright, now we'll be back to item 3A, Discussion Possible Adoption Resolution Approving the Draft 2019-2027 Housing Element for Submittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. You're on.
Thank you, Mary Gonzalez. Good evening, councilmembers. Dusty, you're the community development director. So, before you today is Discussion and Possible Adoption of a Resolution Approving the Draft 2019 through 2027 Housing Element Update for Submittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So, essentially where we're at is, we have a draft that's been prepared, but we have to send it to HCD to get it certified, at which point it would come back to the council for full adoption. It, you, you, some of the council members may recall that we relatively recently went through this process for our last housing element update, which was adopted by the council back on August 22nd, 2018. The reason we're back in front of you with essentially a year is that for a while there, the city was behind the ball as far as maintaining a on-schedule housing element update. The good news is, is if we're able to complete this one on time, we then go to an eight-year cycle, and so we wouldn't be legally having to amend our housing element for a good amount of time. I do have a PowerPoint that I prepared, and I believe the city clerks handed you out some slides, so you don't have to tweak your neck if you don't want to. You also have the Agenda Summary Report and the Draft Housing Element, and then finally the Resolution. So, just a very quick overview, the housing element update, the main purpose is to plan to meet the existing and projected housing needs. Is the glare on there so much that folks prefer to light out? I don't know if that's helpful or not.
And Jeff, can you film that while I'm here? Okay, I need to move, I'll move.
Thank you. It says, the plan to meet the existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the, of the community. So, yep, the rich folks need their homes, but so do the poorest of the poor. This is one of the seven mandated general plan elements. Like I stated previously, we're reverting to a new eight-year timeframe set by state law, and again, HCD is the agency that's responsible for reviewing and certifying our housing. In the housing element, you have the needs assessment, potential housing constraints, and, as well as available housing resources. And I realize it's hard, I almost need to like make a noise to let you know I've gone on to the next slide there. Housing element overview, the goals policies program, qualified objectives. So, what we're doing is ensuring that we have adequate available land to support our, identified housing needs for all economic groups. We look for opportunities to assist in the development of affordable housing, address government constraints. We certainly aren't just looking at new housing, but also preserving our existing housing stock, especially some of the affordable housing that we have within the city, and then always promote equal housing opportunities. Come on the, this is, this is coming from data from the, from the census possibly. It shows the population growth from Mendocino County, which is anticipated to be 7.3% from 2018 to 2060. The facet growth is projected between 2020 and 2035. I mean, I share this information because it may be of interest, but my personal feeling is, is that our growth is tied to our ability to build housing. So, I think at this point, any housing we build will get filled, and that probably is gonna produce more of a growth rate than just something that's sort of projected by the state. If we don't build any new housing, it's, it's hard to support growth. Speaking of our housing stock, this was probably the most alarming thing to me that came out of this exercise. Eighty-four percent of our housing stock is over 30 years old. You know, and that's, that's alarming, because what, what that tells us is, one, we're not doing a good enough job of, of building new housing, but it also tells us that we have an aging housing stock that, that's gonna deserve attention. One of the concerns that staff has is that some of the folks that have some of these aging housings may not have the, the resources to fix it up themselves. And so, what ends up happening is the house falls into some sort of disrepair, they have to sell it, they're not gonna get, they're gonna have to sell it to somebody who, who realizes they're gonna have to spend money actually. they're going to have to spend money actually fixing the house so that it's more livable or more adequate, more desirable. But then where are those displaced people going to go? Right? So again, it's not about, it's not all about creating new housing, you know, part of it is maintaining our existing housing stock. And I'll get to, at the end, I'll talk about some of the things that the city's trying to do to ensure adequate supply of housing. Four point three of our, four point three percent of the housing stock is vacant, so that tells you we don't have a high vacancy rate, and it's probably actually zero. I, you know, I hear that everyone has a hard time finding a place to rent. And that's a, that's a countywide issue, that's not just the city of Willets. Existing needs, so housing cost burden. Do you, Kathy, do you have a copy of the slides that I produced? Because I actually, my eyesight's bad enough that I can't even read my own PowerPoint from here. I have to, thank you very much. What this slide is showing is that too many people in Willets are overpaying for their housing. And by overpayment, that's defined as if you're spending more than 30% of your household income on housing, that's considered overpayment. And we have forty percent of our lower-income household is paying more than 30%, and 24% of our lower-income households are paying more than 50% of their salary towards housing. When you average that out with all income groups, 20% are overpaying, are over the 30% limit, and then 26% are spending more than half of their income just on housing. You have housing affordability by income level, and so this is just showing, you know, a family that makes, or individual household that makes $72,700 income. The maximum affordable home price, based again on this 30% of your income, should be spent on housing, 30% or less, you could afford a $252,000 home. For those folks that aren't as lucky as some of us, that have an annual income of $25,000, the maximum affordable home price for them is $89,100. The median home sales price in Willets, according to Zillow, is $225,000, which, you know, kind of glancing through some of the ads, that does seem about right. And then the median rental price is $1,800. Again, that's from Zillow. So that's affordable to a moderate income group and greater. I don't know, I'll try to jump to this quickly here. We know that 18% of the Willets population is over 65 years old, so that tells us that we do have a high demand for senior housing in our community, and we certainly see that with our existing senior housing, when they tell me about the waitlist that they currently have. So there is, there's a need for all housing in Willets, including senior housing. Twenty-six percent of our population has a disability. That disability could be just, I have trouble walking and I'm not going to be able to go upstairs, so that tells us they can't move into like a two-story home, or the bedroom's upstairs, or something like that. We have eighty-four households in Willets that are large family households with five or more members. We have twenty-three percent of the Willets households are single female-headed households, so one-income households. Based on the point-in-time count, there's 1,179 homeless individuals in Mendocino County. I don't have a specific number for just Willets. So you've heard me talk about this before, but one of the exercises that we have to go through with the housing element, and it's an important one, is we have to meet what's called our regional housing needs allocation. So essentially, the state determines the housing needs for all income groups for the state of California. They then break that up. For us, it then goes to Mendocino Countywide, through the Mendocino Council of Governments, the jurisdictions met, and we divvied up the RENA numbers. Willet's RENA number is 111, meaning we have to show that there's ample opportunity to build 111 individual household units within our city limits. And then that 111 gets further broken down into income categories. So for instance, we have to show that we have opportunities to build 17 extremely low-income housing units, 17 very low, 25 low-income, 17 moderate-income, and 35 above moderate-income. And that's the breakdown for the 111. We then went and looked at vacant land within the city that was zoned to allow residential uses by right, whether it was multifamily, single-family home, duplexes, et cetera, and determined that there was an opportunity to build 684 units within the city limits. And again, that's broken down by income category. And so the good news is that we met our RENA numbers. And so that, what that means is we don't have to go looking throughout the city to rezone land and work with property owners to change their zoning. So I'm very glad to report that we have pending HCD certification, that it appears that we have adequate land to meet our housing needs or the RENA numbers. I'm going to kind of skip a couple of slides here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
How, in order to meet those numbers, does the city have a plan on how we reach out to any type of investors, so that we can look for people who might be building housing in low income? Do we have a plan, or is it just whoever comes and applies? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, I mean, certainly it's both. I mean, part of it is when you do have a developer that's interested in building a project, the community development department is trying to be helpful. And, you know, one of my lines is, is if you ask me what type of housing we need, I just say yes. So yes, we are very much looking forward to supporting housing projects that come forward. And we do have a number in the queue that should be in front of this council for potential approval sooner than later. Also, staff has tried to reach out to developers, both from the low-income group side, as well as, you know, major developers that would do bigger housing, just to, you know, one, just to see, are you aware of Willets and the opportunities that exist? Other jurisdictions might have issues with water, sewer supply, they might have a number of fees that drive up the cost of housing. We don't have any of those things. There's essentially zero constraints. And so I wonder if it's an issue of people, you know, developers just don't have Willets on the radar, or they checked in with us 10 years ago, you know, maybe things have changed. Or is it a situation where, you know, things don't pencil out because of the cost of construction? You know, but I think we were in a staff meeting earlier, and I said, what I want for my birthday is to meet with a sophisticated developer and talk to him about building significant housing projects in the city, and understand what they need, and then if there's any constraints that we can deal with that would make Willet's a more attractive place to build housing. So there's been some preliminary conversations with groups like Danco, that does what I consider good developments, both in Fort Bragg and the city of Arcata, but we're still looking to establish relationships with housing developers.
Out of that 111, how many would you say have the potential to be built in the next year? I know 111 is what we want to have available, but what do you see for Willets in the next year in terms of more housing? Are we talking about maybe two houses in the next year, 10, 20?
All I can say is that, you know, the city, we don't actually physically build it. We just have to make sure the opportunities are there. We've done that. You know, the, but yes, we do have housing project proposals currently. We're also working through a number of rezone requests to create additional zone residential land, so creating further opportunities. And, you know, with, we also were successful in passing our accessory dwelling unit, that's led to some, a handful of new homes being built. But, you know, with everything in the works now, you know, there's one project that's looking at eight single-family homes and fourplexes. There's another project we have that's, I think, building 30 or 40 apartment units. We had our technical advisory committee meeting yesterday, and we were looking at projects to rezone approximately 10 acres to multifamily residential. We're looking at another potential five parcel subdivision.
So there's stuff in the works.
But, you know, for me to say, yeah, I think this, you know, I'm not sure, but I'll tell you this, there's been a lot more action in the last six months than I've seen in my three years here. Yeah, so things appear to be trending in the right direction, but, you know, it's, we need more.
So Dusty, some of those talks you've had, they're reaching out to see what we're about as they explore, but they still have to go out and seek their financing and do their, sharpen their pencils. Is that how you would characterize it?
You know, the last conversation I had where they left it off was they're going to look for available land that was priced correctly. And so part of it was, you know, they're talking to some landowners, but they either want to sell it for too much, or they don't want to sell their property. And again, you know, the city's not in a position to make them develop their own property or to sell it to somebody else that can, so, yeah. But what they were excited about was our availability of water and sewer services, the low-cost development relative to other jurisdictions, the fact that we've got a number of, they can do significant development as a permitted use, provided they meet our standards. There's no, you know, discretion. Essentially, we've set the target on the ground, and you just need to go hit it. We're not one of those communities that's constantly moving it around. So they felt that, you know, from the staff perspective and the political perspective, that there was, you know, real opportunity to build housing here. But what I haven't heard is them penciling things in and doing the math and telling me, yeah, this is, you know, this, we're taking a real hard look at it. So where we are in the schedule is, again, we have this in front of you today for potential approval to submit to HCD. After that, HCD would have 60 days to review our draft element and get back to us with any comments they may have. And then finally, we would potentially be back in front of the council in October for formal adoption. And then just to mention a few of the things that we have been doing, we're working on currently, we allow accessory dwelling units in all residential zonings without a discretionary permit. We've created density bonus provisions, so if we have a developer that wants to exceed our density standards, they are allowed to do that, provided they set aside a certain amount of units for low-income housing. We now allow, we conserve our R3 zone land for multifamily housing. We allow multifamily housing by route right in the R2 zoning now. We allow residential above commercial uses by right in both our C1 and C2 district. We're currently working with HCD to establish a home rehab loan program. We're following the direction of our general plan and looking at potential opportunities to annex land and create additional resources. I'm looking at John Hescheck, because there's a real opportunity to match up county land with our services and create some real unique opportunities for this county to realize significant housing. Yeah.
Dusty, along those lines, how does that, you know, if we partner with the county, do we get to share in the RENA kind of numbers? Does that work?
You know, the county, I worked on the housing element for the county, and one of the difficulties was meeting the RENA numbers, especially the low-income groups, because you have to meet a certain density for it to be considered low-income. Well, to have the density that the state wants to see in order to call it, you know, an opportunity for low-income housing group, you can't rely on well and septic. You've got to have, you know, water and sewer services. There aren't an abundant number of locations within the county that have, you know, municipal water and sewer services. And then those that do, often they're at or very close to capacity. And so it becomes a very tough exercise to identify opportunities within the county. And so, you know, when we talk about working with the county to potentially annex land, I think that becomes a talking point, in that the city could very well help them meet their RENA numbers. And I think that becomes a unique talking point when you're working with the county.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah, is this the right time to make a few comments as well?
I'm done with my presentation. Thank you.
Well, one of the things was, I just wanted to say that there's an abundance of really interesting data in here that I was really pleased to get more familiar with, you know, a lot of stuff about the number of, there's one place where it's about the number of vacancies, and there's a little bit of discrepancy in one place that says where it went way up, and then it was down to 4%, but then another quote in there said it was zero. So I just wasn't sure that particular, I can't find the page now, but it was, I wasn't sure why there was that slight discrepancy. And also, it was really shocking to see that there was any years in which we had 17% vacancy, because it seems like we've always had a pretty tight market. It's one of the things.
You know, at times I battled with certain data being included in here, just because I just didn't trust the data source. I don't know that we've, I, yeah, I would also question the 17%. And I'm not quite sure, I'm not, I can't pull off that, off.
Yeah, I know.
I'd have to search for it as well. But my, my assumption is, is that, you know, one, it's describing a certain data source, and another way, it's staff sort of articulating what we seem to think is true.
And I think between 4% and 0% vacancy is sort of within your statistical anomalies. 17% I think is outside of that, but I think the 4% is within, and so if you look at two different sources, that's still within your margin of.
Yeah, because when you have only a 4% vacancy, it's probably just the transition of, somebody hasn't moved in yet, but it's like, not really a vacancy.
And some people would call that zero, so I get between zero.
I was also really pleased and wanted to learn more about whether the city can either provide loans for people to upgrade, or can facilitate them getting those loans from somewhere else. But I hadn't known much about that, and I think that's something we should publicize, if there are loans for people to upgrade.
That was the one other thing that I wanted to mention. Thank you for saying that. If you go to the community development department website, and you click on our housing resource tabs, it'll give you a link to a couple good housing authorities. RCHDC, they have a first-time homebuyers program, and city of Willets residences are eligible for that program. And so if you go onto RCHDC's Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation website, or go onto our website, we have a link to it. We've talked to them and confirmed that there is some money available and that our folks are eligible, so that's one thing people can look into. And then also, the county housing authority, they have some programs where they do like Section 8 vouchers and other housing assistance programs and subsidized renting. And so I encourage folks to look into that resource as well. And then I mentioned earlier that we're talking to the state about, and we had our grants report last time, so again, we're just sort of looking on to the future after we've accomplished some other things, because working through the community development block grant program is serious business. And it takes significant staff time, and is a little bit of, again, it's not free money. But they have programs set up where you can, potentially the city could obtain funds, and then lend it out to eligible homeowners to fix up their house. And then the payments could be set up maybe where they don't have to pay us back until they sell the house, or, you know, at the very, at least they get a low-interest loan that's a way better rate than they would otherwise qualify from conventional lending. And I think, you know, that's something worthwhile to keep on our future goals list, yeah.
I would just think that it'd be great to publicize as much as possible that those opportunities, like first-time buyers and people with this aging housing stock that we have, being able to qualify for low-income or low-interest available loans, that's great. One other comment that comes to mind right now was, you said that if this gets approved by HCD, then we have an eight-year window before we have to upgrade. And there are several places in here where you have an eight-year window, and then a five-year kind of goals, you're saying, you're saying what we're going to accomplish in five years. And it, I just, it wasn't quite consistent about whether we're always talking eight years or are we talking five years. Not that it's going to make a huge difference, but there were several places where.
That might be an oversight on staff's part, and so I'll go through there and look for those.
But we do have five-year goals, but that doesn't necessarily relate. But we do have five-year goals, but that doesn't necessarily relate to, there are legal requirements for when you have to do a housing element, and those are very strict. And if you don't do your housing element, you can be subject to some big fines. So they're sort of different things.
Okay.
Goals and the need to redo a housing element.
Okay, well, just, it would be good to just check that, whether the title of a section is the same as what the section says. But anyway, that was a minor thing. And I, it's impressive. It's really great report.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody from the public that would like to speak to or it's our application? Please speak to your name and.
Micah Anderson. I'm a business owner here in town. I actually didn't come here tonight to speak on this topic, but since it came up, I had a meeting a couple days ago about the same exact topic. So we have a, we're one of the cannabis companies here in town on Lenora out, and we currently employ around thirty people and are projected to employ around fifty or sixty by the end of the year. And we're already running into the issue of a lot of our employees that are having a hard time to find housing here. You know, they're driving from Ukiah or other areas of the county, but we have, you know, at least ten guys that are driving from even outside of the county, just because they can't find housing here. And I'm a part of a group where we discuss a lot of different topics with the other cannabis companies throughout the county, and just kind of talking through pain points and what can we do to make sure that we all survive here in the county as an industry. And that's one of the things that always comes up, not only from us, but just with the other companies, is we're all, you know, looking for housing, trying to get employees to come here, you know, and it's been an issue, so.
Mr. Anderson, kind of like down in the Bay Area where they Google, and some of those folks have kind of the same issues, they usually, not saying you guys are in a position to, but maybe to partner with any other builders out there to.
Yeah.
There could be a secondary market for, I just throw that out there, because sometimes employers, you know, that's how Scotia up there ended up, it was a company town, they built the housing because they needed housing, and I think, look at those sort of, I know you guys are probably overwhelmed by what you're doing.
I'm redlining on my one project right now.
Oh, I get that. But I figure, the more you start looking at the big picture and those impacts, I think that it may be one, as you talk not only with your fellow cannabis folks, but other industries out there, you know, you might be in a position to partner up with other housing folks, so I just throw that out there. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this? Okay, I think we're looking at adopting a resolution for the middle of the draft housing element?
Correct.
All right, do I have a second?
One second, the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? That, let's call for the vote.
Councilman, yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Very close.
Yes, all right. Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you.
All right, I think you're still on, I think, so. So now we are, item 3B, notice of public hearing. Discussion and possible action to introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending chapter 17.06, 17.22, 17.24, 17.26, 17.28, and 17.29, and 17.85 of the Willet's Municipal Code to authorize the cultivation, processing, distribution, testing, research, transportation, dispensing, manufacturing of adult-use recreational cannabis, allowing processing, testing, research, manufacturing of medicinal industrial hemp products, allowing cannabis delivery services from non-storefront facilities, allow for type VII cannabis and medicinal industrial hemp manufacturing facilities to operate in industrial zone lands, and five, allow for both cannabis indoor cultivation and nursery business to operate on the same property. And lastly, six, clarify and authorize retailers may sell cannabis products specified for use by animals.
So, thank you, Mayor. So the council may recall the February 27, 2019, meeting where we had a discussion on potential amendments to our existing cannabis ordinance. Staff has followed up on the direction provided by the council at that meeting, as noted in the February 27, 2019 minutes, and made a number of changes to the ordinance consistent with that direction, and now it's in front of you for potential approval. The, you have the agenda summary report, you have our staff report, you have attachment A, which is the clean version of the proposed amendments, and then you also have the edited version, which is a little messy, I apologize, it's showing track changes, but what attachment B is trying to show you is the changes that staff has completed in relation to the existing ordinance. And then finally, at our February meeting, there was some discussion about various buffers, and so there was some discussion about how we arrived at the buffers during previous council decisions, and then I was able to attach the maps that we used in our decision process way back when.
And I'm just going to jump in. As for the edited version, those who have it in color see three different colors, and a question came up, why? That's because when different people work on documents, Word assigns them a color. And so I could not get all of them to the same color. They do not let you do that, so that just reflects that three of us did work on this before, so that's to explain why there are three colors.
Not my forte either, but certainly happy to provide any clarification on that. I, I think, you know, we know what it is, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you may.
So just one question that just now came to my mind. I noticed that item six allows dispensaries retailers to sell for animal's use. Does, did the rest of the ordinance also allow the manufacturer, the testing, or any of the other allowed uses for, because before it wasn't, it never mentioned, it was only medical?
No, the ordinance continues to be silent on that end of it, but I think typically, you know, whether it's manufacturing, you know, they're creating, say, in oil, but whether that's used for a product that's going to be sold to animals, or whether it's a product that's being made for human consumption, it's, I don't think it's an important distinction to have to make, but we can.
Yeah, so it's your interpretation, then, having changed it from medical for humans only to both medical and recreational, that it also basically would allow a manufacturer to manufacture, say, pet products or something? Is that, is that the case? I'm just, I just wanted to ensure.
Right, okay, yeah. I don't have an answer for your question.
I think that what we needed to clarify is because our ordinance did not say anything about pet-related products, the open question was out there, and I do not think it's related to the adult use. But Dusty did do some additional research to make sure that that use would be permitted. I think that that, does that answer question A? So it's not, those aren't related factors? That is part of the discussion that came out of our February 27 discussion? Dusty did some research and has clarified that in the ordinance, is that?
Well, yeah, you know, there was direction to provide clarification that, you know, a dispensary could sell products that were intended to be used by animals. And there's some new legislation that's expected to be approved that would make you allowed to sell products that actually contain THC. At this point, there's a little bit of a gray area, but, you know, like a place like JD Red House or Chevron, they're able to sell a product that's intended to be used by animals, provided it's made from CBD from industrial hemp. It's not exactly clear that a dispensary could sell something other than that, but with this new rule being created, that's the intention. So I think this, what we put in the ordinance, it is providing clarification, so we're not intending to allow anything that the state wouldn't otherwise allow.
Dusty, if I may, our ordinance talks about manufacturing cannabis, using the term cannabis activity. The words cannabis activity appear throughout the ordinance, and it's very broad. It says cannabis activity means a business activity, including but not limited to planting, cultivation, harvesting, transporting, manufacturing, compounding, converting, processing, preparing, storing, packaging, distributing, researching, testing, and selling of wholesale or retail sales of cannabis. That broad definition, I think, would include cannabis activity related to pet products and human products, and I think.
It's just that it apparently is a fairly big market now, and I just want to make sure that we don't, somebody come in and say, "Oh, no, it's not for humans. You can do it in the dispensary, but you can't manufacture it." Just as long as it is based on that definition.
I think that broad definition of cannabis activity would necessarily include for pet products.
And Jim, and ultimately, whether it be pet products or people products, the person selling it would have to comply with the state regs.
Absolutely.
And FDA, if that was the case.
Right, right.
Okay, that was, thank you.
Thank you.
Dusty, I have something I wanted you to clarify. So we've, we're proposing to include recreational cannabis activity in addition to what we previously only had medicinal. In our existing ordinance, we allow for a maximum of three dispensaries. That's not increasing by adding adult use, so there's still only going to be three dispensaries, even though those dispensaries now would be permitted to sell medicinal products as well as recreational products. We're not increasing.
It was explained to the folks, and I'll report out the dispensary selection later, but the current dispensary, the folks that were selected to move forward with the process, they understand that right now they're limited to selling medical products out of the dispensary. Should this ordinance change, then they would then be allowed to sell recreational adult-use products as well, or sell to anyone that's over 21, regardless of whether they have a medical card. But this, the change to adult use doesn't change the number of dispensaries that you're allowed, you're still capped at three. It doesn't propose to change what zonings you're allowed to have businesses in. It just, we simply added adult use and made it work within the existing framework that the council had already approved.
Any other questions up here? Can open up to a public comment.
Yeah, I do have some questions. Going back to the staff report, I was a little disturbed, or a lot disturbed, by the fact that in the staff report, it goes on to talk about direction, that we were making many of the changes at the direction of the council. And my recollection, as we had a discussion about this, and I know Jerry had expressed concerns, but also a willingness to listen, I was under the impression that this is going to come back for some sort of discussion about how we might possibly change things. And so when I saw a staff report that said that we gave direction to do this, this, and this, I was thinking to myself, at no time did I sit at this table and this council gave direction to say, "Okay, let's write an ordinance and waive the first reading and put recreational cannabis out there," or to do this or to that. There are quite a few changes in this ordinance, and each time it says that we gave direction. So I was a little bothered by that. It would have, for me, it should have said staff's recommendation, or after research or thought or something, because I didn't feel as if I participated in staff direction. And I felt as if there was staff direction, it didn't come from a public setting. I don't know if the direction was given in private meetings, and this interpretation was gathered from individual council members coming one-on-one, and then collectively calling it direction. I just thought I was a little lost in the wording.
If I could respond to that. This morning, I took a look at the minutes from that February 27 meeting, and it's clear that direction was given. The title to item 3B of that meeting says, "Discussion and staff direction regarding potential changes to the city's cannabis ordinance in light of changes to the industry and state regulations." And then it goes on to identify, I think, seven different enumerated changes to the ordinance, and one of which was allow for medical and recreational licenses. And then after listing each of the seven directions on changes to the ordinance, it provides in the minutes, "The city council also asked for direction from legal counsel as to whether the city could legally alter the buffer zone, directed legal opinion on that issue." And then it shows that there was a motion given. Moved by Stransky, seconded by Strong, and carried four to one with Rodriguez dissenting to direct staff to complete any identified recommendation, recommended revisions to chapter 17.85 medical cannabis activities of the Willet's zoning code, and bring the matter back to council consideration in public hearing.
Thank you for clarifying, Jim.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear. Any recommendations, which apparently these are not recommendations.
Yeah, we're talking about the, any of the identified recommendations, and there were seven of them.
Yeah, as it appears. I have another question. If you're a dispensary, what, I'm a little unclear as to what advantage the city has to limiting it to three dispensaries. If we're opening it up so that anybody can have a non-storefront, basically a non-storefront dispensary, it just feels like we started with medicinal, and then it just, it just keeps going, and I can't help wonder if, like, okay, when are we going to see it in C1? When are we going to see it in residential? When will enough be, when will enough be enough? I'm just floored at.
So.
And then I have one more question. We, on item number 13, we talk about the type C, or type VII?
Item 13.
Yeah, let's see, let me find what page that's on real quick. It's regards to type VII. And there's a, there's a change regards to type VII. And I'm wondering what brought about the change after such an extensive conversation before.
Page three. Did you have a staff report?
Staff report? Because page three has type VII manufacturing level two.
Yeah.
Where'd you find it, page three?
Page three.
Page three, it's.
I'm almost there.
It's page 108 on our, on our packet. 107, I guess.
I'm just wondering, I'm looking for it, but what brought about such a dramatic change in the city's position?
So if I can ask for, make sure I understand the question. You're asking staff why, why we're looking at potentially making the move from where we just allowed for type VI non-volatile manufacturing using non-volatile solvents, with the exception of certain things such as ethanol, to full type VII facilities?
Yes.
I think that's a council question, or a staff question.
There was a gentleman from one of the currently operating businesses who spoke to why his business would benefit from being allowed to use the type VII solvents, and I believe our fire chief spoke about the safety regulations that were being met, and that essentially, as long as the system was properly operating, there wasn't any increased safety issue for the community. And so the council, four out of five, said we would be willing to look at a change to the ordinance to allow that in order to remove a restriction for a business that was operating already currently in our city and following the regulations.
And Chris, could you come up and speak to that for us? Because I assume this would come up. I guess my, I'll start off by saying, are you okay with the type VII?
Yeah, and I can explain. Thank you for having me up here tonight. For us, we don't make decisions on whether a type VI or a type VII is allowed. That's your, that's your guys' per view. It's up to us to make sure that it's safe. Now, the fact of the matter is, we're calling ethanol by state law, they call it a non-volatile solvent. But the reality is, in my world, absolutely ethanol is a volatile solvent by definition. So we are dealing with a volatile solvent as we, as we see it when it comes to storage, or if it's in pretty much any other market other than the cannabis arena. So for permitting process, it's considered to be non-volatile. But as far as. But as far as storage, if you owned a storage facility that was going to store ethanol by itself, it's going to be looked at by the fire protection district as a volatile solvent. There are differences. Flammable gases, obviously, they're, they're not tangible. When they come out of the bottle, you can't see them. They're in the air, whereas ethanol spilled on the floor, you can, you can see it. But it's our job to enforce the code, California code. So we take a very non-biased approach to this industry, and as a regulator, we are the authority having jurisdiction over the California Fire Code. We've looked at this industry as, as any type of other industry that we have, and how can we make that market safe? Going as far as the brand-new 2019 Fire Code that came out has Chapter 39, which has been adopted by the state fire marshal's office. The reason why I say that, we don't actually have to adopt that chapter. We already get it when it comes out. It deals directly with processing and extraction facilities. Most of it's referred back to NFPA guidelines, which we have already used in the facilities that we deal with now for safety measures. We stick by the safety measures as a whole. We're pretty black and white with code. We don't, we don't really allow any variance with that. As a matter of fact, on a couple of the facilities that we have here now, we've actually asked that for extra in a couple of different areas, I give an example in some stored, in storage facilities. Code doesn't say there has to be a valve in place between flammable liquid storage and when it's, when it's moved into the building. We asked the building owners, I don't want it that way. If the alarm system goes off and says that there is a problem in the building, I want that valve to shut off because I don't want that stored liquid in the building. It was not a problem. They obliged and made that happen without any trouble whatsoever. We can't make these facilities safe by, with the use of flammable gases. They're already in industry. It's, it's already out there. I will tell you this, it takes an incredible amount of time for our staff to deal with because we haven't normally dealt with flammable gas, for transparency purposes. This will be the first time we're dealing with flammable gases in industry around here. Volatile solvents such as ethanol, we already deal with them in industry in this town as we speak without the cannabis industry being here. So the safety measures are built into state code and statute, and the way we've adopted the Fire Code. We adopted in its entirety with amendments and, and the appendices. So we have the tools at our disposal to make good decisions about how we regulate the facilities for safety measures.
Chris, I'm going to put you on the spot because I'm not a fireman, nor do I have that expertise. We are the decision makers, so to go from type 6 to type 7, if I'm going to go with your recommendation, should I or shouldn't I? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, but because it's your.
It's not putting me on the spot. The question for me is, can we make a facility safe with flammable gases? The answer is yes. The proprietors, the people who own the business have to be willing to put forth the cost that it's going to take to make that area safe.
And you feel you can, it sounds like they've been willing to make changes. You feel that you're in a position to make sure that happens if we go that route and not, I don't want to endanger you or any of your firemen, the public, and so.
Our, our public and my, my firemen are my top priority by far for safety. If I felt like it wasn't safe, I would have a lot of people very upset with me because I wouldn't sign on the permit. That's the, that's the bottom line for me.
So if we went again to 7, then you feel you can handle it?
Yeah. It's, it's our job, Mayor, when we adopt, when we adopt that code in its entirety, it wouldn't be fair to us to not enforce the code in its entirety.
And I believe you. I just wanted to put it on the record. That's why I'm asking. Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to comment also that you brought up, Sabrina, that about the dispensaries. We didn't, I didn't, want to have deliveries being made from out of the city. That was done at the state level. It preempts us. So we didn't have any choice about allowing that because the state said, this is on the dispensary question. So, you know, in our previous decision, we said three dispensaries, that's it. And we can reconsider it years from now if we decide that's not enough, but right now that's the limit, whether it's now opened up to recreational use as well. It's still three dispensaries. But this allowing deliveries from a non-storefront to a non-storefront is something that was imposed upon us and everybody in the state against our wishes, is my understanding. Is that right, Dusty?
Sorry, Chris.
No, I actually have a point here, guys, that I would like to add to.
On this subject, or?
Yeah, what we were talking about.
Well, why don't you finish up?
Yeah, okay, sorry, I thought we were done.
One thing that does give me a little more comfort in this, Title 17 is very clear. We have closed-loop systems that are using, in type 7 facilities, are using flammable gases. Right now, I'm, I'm the sign-off for a closed-loop system with the use of ethanol, class 1B flammable liquids. That's all it takes is for me to sign on the bottom line to say that that system is good. That's not the case when it comes to type 7 facilities. So it does take a third-party engineering firm to sign off on that as well as, as well as myself when it comes to the flammable gases.
And that's the cost borne by the applicant?
Yeah, absolutely.
They get an engineer that's certified by the state?
But I can't approve a system, a closed-loop system, when it comes to flammable gases in a type 7 facility on my own. That's per Title 17.
So you, before you approve it, you have to see that engineer sign off, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Dusty, sorry.
Councilman Strong, you are correct in that there was state law that was passed after our initial adoption of the ordinance that superseded our restriction on deliveries within the city limits. And whether the city likes it or not, anyone in California that has an appropriate state and local license to deliver cannabis may deliver cannabis within the city limits. Initially, when we passed the ordinance, we had a cap of three dispensaries, and delivery services were only allowed in conjunction with those existing dispensaries. Otherwise, we restricted delivery services within, within the city limits.
So Dusty, basically, right now, if you're licensed for delivery, you can.
Deliver anywhere.
So somebody who sets up on Fort Bragg Road right outside of town can deliver to as many places in Willets as they can?
Correct.
As long as they're licensed and by the county and the state?
Right. There's hours of operation, there's limitations on where you deliver, it has to be like, you know, a house or something. You can't just be hanging out the park and get a delivery. But consistent with state law, that's, that's true.
What is, what is the benefit of having that included in our ordinance to allow that non-storefront delivery?
You know, trying to look into the, you know, the council's thoughts when they provided that direction with staff, was it, it had to do with the fact that, well, you know, if we can't restrict it, we might as well benefit from it from some standpoint, I guess, or?
I guess, along with Regret saying, is there any advantage to the, the three dispensaries to having, not that they have exclusive rights, because it sounds like the state took that away.
Right.
Any advantage to them of not allowing non-storefront folks to deliver, or because the state's, I'm assuming the market will get diluted because.
Right.
Eventually, everybody, you know, unless you have your favorite delivery guy come that, you know.
Right, so because of the changes in state law, the dispensaries have that competition now, whether the city likes it or not.
Whether the dispensary likes it or not.
I think it's perhaps we didn't want to be in conflict with the regulatory structure as it is.
Right, and I, and there is, by the way, a lawsuit that's pending, brought by several cities, probably 20 different cities in the state are challenging this new change in the state law that allows for the delivery as being an illegal interference with cities' rights to, to, to regulate this. But that's, so the outcome could change, but.
How would that affect our ordinance if we pass it the way it is now? Is there a way to?
You know, if, if, if this lawsuit prevailed and that state law was rescinded, I think that any conflicting language in our ordinance would be unenforceable, and we wouldn't enforce it, and it would be.
Yeah, so, so right now, the, the city council has the authority to not allow for non-storefront retail within the city limits. What we can't disallow is those types of businesses are located outside of the city from delivering within the city. If, if that lawsuit that was referenced is successful, then, then the city would, would go back to maintain the ability to restrict delivery services within the city to, you know, our dispensaries or, or no delivery services, or whatever was the prerogative of the council.
So the changes that you've incorporated don't, wouldn't, it's sort of, it's kind of complicated. If the lawsuit prevails and the state no longer forces this outside, or whether a non-storefront deliveries upon us, does the language that you're proposing goes back to only allowing our?
The council would have to go through the formal process of deleting that language.
It would be amended.
Yeah, why don't we?
It simply would be something that's no longer valid law, that no longer conforms with the law, that we wouldn't.
Well, I just think that if we have three dispensaries and they're delivering, for the sake, argument, that, let's say, they provide that service, and then we also allow for, for the sake of argument, another three out there that are storefront, or non-storefront that are out there, and they're probably banking on the ability to go beyond our borders to go out and deliver, whether it be to Brook trails or out in the valley. And if all of a sudden, the law changes and now they're going to be restricted, the market may very well collapse them, but in the meantime, we'll have, I guess, kind of be like a bunch of hyenas trying to eat the same elephant, you know? So I don't know. I just, I kind of feel like that maybe, too much there, but I kind of want a provision that if that all happens, that we're, we're not just piling more of it on. I kind of wanted our original plan was for our dispensary licenses to have some value as opposed to, you know, we're allowing this, you got to be a good egg, and you got to abide by all our rules, and as long as you're following everything, then you get the slice of this market and whatever the state allows you, I guess, so.
Isn't it, if I read it correctly, didn't it say that a business permit was required to sell from each of these non-storefront facilities?
I read that, too.
So in the event that that lawsuit is successful, we will have already issued city licenses for people to perform a, perform a service.
And that, and that permit would be something to be revoked, I think, if it's inconsistent with state law?
I think the question that's sitting out there that we are struggling with is, if state law changes as a result of the lawsuit, and therefore, non-storefronts would not be allowed to, as a right, deliver, but could with the permit, does that mean that our legislation would then carry forward after the lawsuit and be able to be delivered within the city limits?
And I guess that's my question, too, with the dilution of our, our dispensary. All of a sudden, you know, right now, if I get a dispense, I'm one of the dispensary guys, and, and I, hopefully, somebody here is one of those folks and can, I'd like to hear from them, but that all of a sudden, they thought, well, at least we've got Willetts and these other folks, they're going to be observed in the county, all of a sudden, maybe the county was still allowed, but all of a sudden now, the, the market share is now very diluted within the town, and the idea was that we were only going to allow three because, again, we wanted to really give them that, that exclusive right.
Well, I mean, I wasn't on the council when you all made, when you passed this ordinance, but I, my impression was also not just that you were trying to protect the cannabis businesses that would open the three dispensaries, but that you were responding to community concerns, that people didn't want a dispensary on every corner.
Yes.
And so by limiting it to three, you were striking a compromise where you were saying, yes, we will allow this business use in our community, but we're going to limit it. And that's been controversial, but that's what the council decided. And so it almost feels like by including these non, I think, non-storefront retail, we're sort of subverting the intent of the council and the wishes of the community. And that's something I think that should be debated, discussed.
So if we omitted that part, even though our ordinance would be visually sort of in conflict with the law, if this lawsuit prevails, then we would just be back to where we were, and, and that would be.
Right. We could eliminate this, and our ordinance would be silent on the issue of, of delivery from non-storefronts. And if the, if the law prevails and the lawsuit is unsuccessful, we would have to, we could not prevent that.
Correct.
Yeah, somebody could come in from outside, but at least our current folks in town that were permitted for that use, they would.
So we, we could eliminate this one item, then maybe that would be consistent with the previous direction the council gave.
I think that's how I feel.
That's how I feel, too. Yeah, and I, it's better in my view that we're, we're silent in that we didn't decide to allow it. The state imposed that on us, and we'll have to live with it while that law is in place. But if the law changes, I want us to revert to what the direction of the council was. And it's exactly right, Regret, that it's not only for the benefit of the cannabis businesses, it's really for the community, and that we don't want to just be known as cannabis everywhere community. We are being very, we're trying to be very judicious about, about how we do this in a way that is protecting the community values.
I don't see a problem striking number three.
Okay. And again, we can't help what the state is doing. You can with your state legislature, I guess, and the governor, but.
Is that okay?
Certainly, yeah. Whatever direction the council wants to provide, it's certainly fine with staff, and we're doing our best to, to make those changes. I do want to point out on page 24 of the, of the proposed ordinance, this is proposed section 17.85.14013. It says, "Every person not having a fixed place of business within the city who engages in cannabis sales within the city limits." So this is referring to, say, a delivery service that's established, a YKIA, that's per state law, allowed to deliver within the city of Willets, shall obtain a city business license and shall pay a license tax under our tax code, measured by grocery receipts from business done within the city. It may still be relevant to keep that section somewhere in the ordinance.
I like that because it's no different than whoever coming into town to deliver that.
Yeah. But if it's, if it's the wish of the council, staff's happy to delete that section otherwise.
Good.
I actually like that because I also like that it specifies that it all must be trapped in trace material, and I think that that's the protection for the community that we're hoping to uphold to protect the legal cannabis businesses that are doing business here.
So we should, do we need a, I guess, a final vote, we would?
Yeah, when we come back to, after public hearing.
No, I don't.
I think it's the consensus that we're, of the council, that we're going to make these changes and incorporate them in the final draft. It's right next time.
Are there any other changes, questions, Dusty, before I open it up?
Yeah, I have one more question. What was the reasoning behind the action to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance? It appears that the intent was to, to move forward, and my concern is, is that, I know that you spend much of your time caring directly from the cannabis industry and what their needs are, and maybe not as much from the general public in terms of what their wants and needs are. The first time when we started having discussions about cannabis, we had plenty of opportunity for public input, and this seems like a pretty big issue to move with all of these changes, including moving to recreational. But there doesn't seem to be any, any other opportunities for the community to get involved and give any feedback. And so that, that bothered me. I'm just wondering, was there a reason for that?
You're referring to the waiving of the first reading?
Yeah.
So the waiving of the first reading, that's just so that I don't have to sit here, or somebody doesn't have to sit here and read all 31 pages of the ordinance verbatim.
Okay.
Right, so.
Dusty, sure.
Okay, I guess the bigger question is.
So, yeah, that happens in every single ordinance.
Why aren't we having a, a public meeting, like we did previously, where the public had an opportunity to come in? We've informed an ad hoc committee in giving public opportunity. So I'm wondering why we don't, we're not offering more opportunities for the public to participate?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have it tonight, and, you know, the council has the ability to request, you know, that staff hold additional meetings before making a decision, sure.
But, you know, waiving, waiving a reading of the ordinance, that's routine, and that happens with the passage of every single ordinance. And it's, it's lawful. happens with the passage of every single ordinance, and it's lawful, and it's routine, and every city and every county does exactly that, because otherwise, as Dusty said, he'd have to read every word, he'd be reading for 45 minutes.
Right, but as you read on, the intent of this would be that it would be on the next agenda for approval, that allows very little opportunity for the public to come forward. I mean, this was posted on Sunday, Friday?
Friday, the public hearing notice went in the paper two weeks ago.
It's on the city's website, and so, every ordinance requires two hearings, there's an initial hearing to introduce, and get comment from the council, and make changes to the ordinance, and a second, at the second hearing, it's adopted. You have the prerogative, if you wish, to have more than a two-process adoption, but a two-process adoption is consistent with the state law.
I also, I just also wanted to say that on February, for the February 27 council meeting in which we brought all these changes, we wrote a pretty comprehensive staff report, it was well noticed, and it was also reported in all the newspapers, the actions that were taken, and also the direction to come back, and it was well publicized.
So, Jim, and I think, thank you for clarifying, that there isn't anything nefarious, the part of the council or the city of waiving the reading, since that happens, whether we're passing a dog catcher ordinance, or we're doing whatever, and that we are basically allowing public comment today from all parties, and I'm prepared to sit here and keep the public hearing open as long as people want to speak.
There is a second...
And, and basically, if Dusty won, if it would make you happy to have Dusty read the whole ordinance, instead of listening to the public tonight, I would defer...
I would be happy if the public had another opportunity to speak to the issue.
I believe we're going to give the public the opportunity, but by waiving the ordinance, I think we're taking away public time to speak, or, no, by not waiving the reading.
The reading.
Thank you, that we're not, we're basically depriving the public of speaking, because we do that normally, so that we're not sitting here going, the party of the first part, sub two, et cetera, and as long as I've been either sitting back there or up here, they've waived the reading of the ordinance just so that they can introduce it, and so...
I would like to make a comment, also, the current ordinance without these changes has been on the city's website for, since 2017, and it's fascinating reading, I'm not even kidding, for anybody who wants to read it, it's quite an ordinance. This new one has been available on the city website since Friday, also fascinating. So, people who want to read it have had lots of...
Go ahead.
And the other thing is, this is, this, the first public hearing, we are not adopting it tonight, we're giving direction, if we want to change things, to the staff, and then it comes back, and there will be, again, a public hearing at that time, so people that, for some reason, didn't find out that we were doing this tonight, can come back two weeks from now, or whenever that's scheduled, maybe it's more than two weeks, but can definitely give your opinions, and we want to hear them.
So, I guess I wanted to clarify that for everybody out there, that there was nothing nefarious for those folks out there in the community who are up here that may think that's the case, this is the way it's done, and I'll tell you what, whether it's the school board, or the water board, or Brook Trails, or whatever, if you say we're doing it, I would hope that you look at yourselves out there, and if you waive the reading of an ordinance, ask yourself, is it being nefarious, or are we just following normal procedure?
We're following normal procedure.
So, all right, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. At this point, I'm opening up the public hearing, and anybody who might come up and speak, I would just ask that you state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike Anderson, again, I'm one of the owners of the business down the road here, Leaf Holdings. I came here tonight to speak on behalf of, specifically to the type seven issue, and to really address as to why it's important for our business to have the city move, or allow from us to go from a type six to a type seven. Without getting into the science and the safety of it, I'll allow our chief science officer to discuss that, it really comes down to a few things for us, it's, if you look at, you know, if you were to look at a pie of the different types of products that are sold in the California market, on the extract side, a good 50 to 60 percent of what is popular and sold is done through hydrocarbon extraction. So, by not allowing us to do this type of extraction, it puts our business at a disadvantage when we're competing with the rest of the state and other companies, you know, even just outside of the city of Willets, where they are allowed to do type sevens. The other thing is that remediation of pesticides is a very, very important thing in the extraction business, and you've got a lot of really great cultivators in Mendocino County, a lot of them which have excellent organic practices and are still failing pesticide tests, not because of what they're doing, but because of whether they're buying contaminated compost or plants from a nursery that didn't have best practices, whatever the reason is, we see it all the time, we test material every single day, and with the use of hydrocarbon extraction, it allows for us to pull out trace amounts of pesticide material, which allows for a lot more of the material that's in our neighborhood to enter the market. Without us being able to do this practice, it really limits us on what we can purchase from the farming community and what we can't. You know, two or three years ago, when I was here speaking about the ordinance getting passed, I remember, Mr. Mayor, you made the comment, there was someone in the crowd, and there was a back and forth, and you made the comment of, hey, let's just get the horse out of, and this was specific to the type seven, let's get the horse out of the cart, and make sure it runs straight and doesn't turn and bite somebody, and really just kind of speaking to, let's just make sure you guys do what you say you're going to do, and I feel that not only our company, but the other operators here in the city really have done a great job, I mean, we've made a very sizable investment here in the community, and we're really just trying to ensure that our business is successful, and having a type seven really, it would help to ensure that, so I'll just leave it at that.
Anybody else? Go ahead. If you could state your name.
Phil Potter, I'm chief science officer at Blockstar, and I just wanted to touch on some of the issues regarding the type seven manufacturing. The reason that this is desirable is that it allows the full range of plant compounds to be expressed in a concentrated form, and if it is unregulated, by allowing regulated volatile manufacturing, I think it really deters unregulated black market operations. In a regulated environment with closed-loop production, it's an established industrial It's common in pharmaceuticals and food-grade vegetable oil production, as well as essential oil manufacturing, because, as in cannabis, it allows the full profile of the plant to be expressed as a concentrate. It's not inherently more dangerous than other permitted activities, such as LPG gas distribution, or even a gasoline to link station. Regulation specific to type seven manufacturing is outlined in the California Department of Public Health regulations, they must be conducted in closed-loop extraction systems, the system must be certified by a California licensed engineer as safe for its intended use and built to codes of recognized and generally accepted good engineering practices, the system must meet all applicable fire safety and building code requirements, it's not permitted in residential zones, and a local fire code official must approve the operation, and as with other cannabis licenses, the operation must receive authorization from local and state government, including all applicable local permits and inspections. In addition to the safety features that the California Department of Public Health requires, we've worked with Chief Wilkes to include additional safety features, such as gas detection systems that trigger alarms automatically, ventilation if activated, automatic fire suppression systems, fail-safe procedures in the event of any kind of system failure, and reports generated by licensed engineers that certify the safety of the system are subject to review and approval by local fire code officials. This volatile manufacturing, this type seven manufacturing is the largest segment of cannabis manufacturing, largely, again, because it allows this full extraction of both terpenoid aromatic compounds, as well as cannabinoid active principles.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Amy Grooms, a parent and a teacher, elementary teacher. I want to request that we increase the buffer zone, I spoke in February, and I've been waiting for this time to relook at how far our buffer zones are around schools. I believe Dusty had mentioned that state requirements are 600 feet, minimum of 600 feet from a school. Currently, REMCO is right next to Bechtel Grove School, I didn't get my tape measure out, I would love to hear the exact measurements of how far it is from the school fence, we have people playing football and soccer, and I'm worried that that could turn into a recreational use right there. At my site at Blosser, we border an industrial, all around our campus, it has industrial properties bordering, and that could be a potential cannabis activity, we could potentially go there, I worry about that in the future. So, I want you to relook at how far it's happening around our schools, put our kids first, and hopefully, the money that you generate from this will go to a rec center for our kids, more basketball courts, and things that our kids can do. The other thing would be, I would like you to postpone it as well, to let the community have a say in this, I found out four days ago, or that it was posted on Friday, and it's not enough time for the parents and the community to speak up, and I appreciate that you said it will happen in possibly two weeks from now, to give us an idea. Bechtel Grove Back-to-School Night was tonight, from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock, so the parents that have the children at the site, the school right next to the current site, they can't be here tonight, so I urge you to put our kids first, I understand there's a need for this activity, but the recreational use is very bothersome for myself as a parent, and what it's doing for our community, so. And I'm thinking that if there's 28 sites, 28 grows that have been permitted, what does that mean for all 28? They're going to be able to sell at their site and not be considered a dispensary? I'm very confused at the language, I guess.
We changed that.
Okay, thank you, and so if we're following the guidelines with the lawsuit, we should look at the state requirements for minimum, it got changed to 200 feet from before, it was 600 or 500, with...
Amy, sorry to interrupt you, the state requirements that you speak of are different than this lawsuit, it's actually a bunch of cities that have actually...
I know it's different, but what I'm saying is that the requirement, the state licensing, like permit requirement, say, it should be 600 feet from the fence line, well, I'm thinking 600 feet from the fence line, they can share the same fence line, and so that's bothersome to me, because you can have a truck delivering or leaving within 100 feet of a, 200 feet from a school, you just can't, you know what I mean? Like, the building alone you cultivate in, but activities are happening outside the building, and Arcata is an example, I believe there was just a robbery in July, so it's not if it will happen, it's when it will happen, and our kids are playing right next door, so, and I know our town is small, but when it comes to money, what is the bigger picture?
Jim, and I know you sent us a memo, but when it came to projects that were already approved, they're basically...
Right, if the city has...
I just wanted to speak to that really quick, before you start. I understand if they're already been permitted, those are medical use, those are not recreational use, so as soon as you give the opportunity for recreational use within, by a school, then that should be different, I understand, and if the property changes, property owners, then as a license, it should also, does it get granted to the next person that buys the property? Well, if it's right next to a school, within 600 feet, 1,000 feet from a school, should it be granted? So, we're talking about selling the properties, or in the future, when the business is no longer, what happens there? So, recreational use is what we're talking about, so I will let you continue, because I've probably ran out of time. I appreciate it.
Fine, I was interrupting, and I wanted to clarify some things, so...
So, the 600-foot rule applies to dispensaries. Other than dispensaries, if we're talking about cultivation, research, testing, manufacturing facilities, it's a 200-foot buffer. The portion of the REMCO building that has been leased for cannabis use is for cultivation. That portion of the building is 260 feet away from the middle school, and outside of the 200-foot buffer, so it is permissible, under state law and our ordinance, to have indoor cultivation in that portion of the building, but not a dispensary.
They could not have a dispensary.
No sales, no dispensary.
And since we nixed the non-storefront, that wouldn't be...
Right.
But technically, business across the street from the school, or sorry, residents across the street from the school, the way the law stands now, a dispensary from yuccaia could deliver to them, is the way the law stands now, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just have a question to that, according to the newspaper and what Dusty duly said, is the state license requires a minimum of a 600-foot buffer for any cannabis activity. So I'm confused at what you just said, if it's like earlier cannabis activity, wouldn't that count for cultivation and...
Well, I'm not sure what source you're reading from, if it was a newspaper article or something, or...
No, it was in our, your last meeting, February 28, it was in that meeting, he stated that it was 600 feet for cannabis activity, so I just wanted to clarify...
Well, I would defer to Dusty as to what he said and what he meant, but I think he would agree with me that there is a 200-foot buffer from schools for cannabis activity, unless it's dispensing, and then it's a 600-foot, and that's regardless of whether that cannabis is recreational or medicinal.
Okay, so we changed that...
And one other thing, if we're talking about the Bechtel Grove Middle School, a permit has already been issued, monies have been invested toward that permit...
For medical?
For cultivation, and that is, that, by state law, gives a vested right to proceed, we can't give a permit to someone, have them rely on it, and spend money toward that permit, and then say, no, you know what, it really should be a 300-foot buffer, you can't do that, even the, we established, again, we established, we established these buffer zones, and the reason that we thought that a two, the council determined that a 200-foot buffer was sufficient, was because of the enforcement abilities we have in our ordinance, that if odor is detected outside of the facility, the permit can be revoked, virtue that you try to gain compliance, but we have strong ability to make sure that there are no secondary effects to the community, to the school, from this, and so we're talking about a building that will be sealed, which you shouldn't be able to detect that cultivation is going on in there, so I'm not sure what the actual danger...
Crime, crime comes with marijuana and cannabis, and we know this, and so what I'm going to say next is that if we have it a medical use, yes, they already have a permit, yes, they're growing in that site, but as we're thinking about adding in the recreational use and selling or transporting out of there, I don't know if that changes, but we need to rethink how far it is from a school, and go back to what the original one was before Bruce Burton was a mayor, and now owns REMCO, we need to go back and think about it, and if we can't change it for that site right now that has that permit, then if that site, if that business closes or changes persons that own the business, then at that point, we should be able to make the change, and then we need to relook at what other permitting... And then we need to relook at what other permits we are honoring, the 28 that we have, possibly more, and look at where they are and where they can be from a school.
Well, there cannot be dispensing from the REMCO site.
So that, okay, great. And I would like to see it be 600 feet from a school anywhere, whether it's cultivation, any kind of cannabis activity, 600 feet or more away from a school. Our kids deserve it and I really hope you rethink it. That's all. So I hope to come back for a public hearing about that soon.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Can I ask a question? The cannabis activity related to a business location, can that also be restricted from, it has to be more than 200 feet from the property line of a school or take care of?
For dispensing, yes.
But I was, no, the 200-foot from a manufacturer or grow, what I'm thinking of is trucking. You know, if they're having things come in and be distributed out of that facility, they should not, they should at least also observe the buffer zones in our, is that?
That's not current in that policy.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that is implied or is stated or should it be?
I have a comment. So if I understood, Amy, she was trying to make a point that we've already, the council already passed a 200-foot buffer that pertained to medical cannabis. Before us today, we do have the opportunity to say, if we're going to allow recreational, we can say it's a 600-foot buffer for cannabis. I know that's not what anybody here wants to hear, but I know that's what they're thinking and it feels like we're kind of making it feel as if that's not an option. That may not be what the council wants to do, but the reality is it is an option.
Well, if two council members desire to place that kind of issue on a future agenda.
Well, isn't, that is, that's what we're discussing here this evening.
Well, no, changing the buffers is not on our agenda tonight.
It wasn't in the recommendation, but it's still under the topic of modifying the ordinance, is it not?
Right. Before you is a proposal to introduce amendments to an ordinance. If you are, and buffer zones are not specifically included in that council action, if you want, if the council desires to change the buffers, I think we should put that on an agenda so that those property owners who would be affected by such a change could have the opportunity to address the council and the community alike.
But the buffer zones are, there is staff direction. In fact, it says in regards to buffer zones, it says that they're requesting no change. So the topic is included in here, just as much as we have the privy to decide that we don't want to allow all cannabis activity to be able to sell.
Okay. I agree with you that it's technically part of the entire package, not specifically on for action. But there was also a request from the council back in February that we provide you with a legal opinion on this issue and we did. It hasn't been released to the public. It would require council action to release that to the public. But the gist of that opinion was that with respect to the middle school property, that property owner and that tenant have a vested right to rely on a permit that's been issued and we cannot modify the buffers related to the middle school. And also that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be changing buffers after people have relied for two years on them and purchased property and leased property and made investments related to decisions that were made earlier, two years ago.
Did we give a permit to those businesses for recreational use with the 200-foot buffer?
It didn't distinguish between recreational use and medicinal use. It was a permit for cultivation.
Is that true, Dusty, that it didn't distinguish between medicinal and recreational, sort of the permit?
All the permits that, all the conditional permits that have been issued for cannabis-related businesses do spell out that they're currently restricted to medical use.
So I wouldn't support that, but I believe that it's fair to consider that at this time, that if we change the allowed uses from only being for medical use of manufacturing, testing, et cetera, et cetera, and we change it now, a month from now, to allow adult use, manufacturing and testing and growing, it is conceivable, I wouldn't support it, that we have a bigger buffer for that than we do for medicinal. I don't think it's a really good policy to do that. I think it's important that zoning be, you know, kind of consistent. We identified the zoning places, you know, which zones things were allowed in, we identified the buffer zones. But it is also true that the existing permit was medical only for this particular spot.
Okay.
I just don't, I don't, I don't support it.
I think you'd have to find that there's a rational basis for having a larger buffer with respect to adult use than with medicinal.
I would agree.
That by, that unless you can, unless you can determine and make findings that the cultivation of recreational marijuana poses such an increased risk to the community and detriment to the school, it's not posed by the cultivation of medicinal marijuana, therefore you need a larger zone so that you can tell this permittee, you may only grow medicinal here. And now, now we are making sure that you cannot grow adult use. And I don't know that you can make that distinction. If the, if the danger is potential break-ins and theft of marijuana or the odors that are produced by cultivating marijuana, you'd have to find that one produces more odor than the other. And I don't think we've got any evidence at all to support that and make some kind of a rational finding that you need a larger buffer for recreational.
Or that, I guess what you're getting at too also, that a thief or potential criminal is going to distinguish between, I'm only going to steal recreational marijuana versus medicinal.
This one suggestion would be the ones that have already been permitted, that actually have the permits in hand, not the ones in processing, that those ones have the medical permit, but if they would like a recreational permit, then they can't unless they are 600 feet because a new passing of a policy or a law has been placed. And then any future permits would need to be 600 feet from a school.
But why would you need 600 feet for recreational but only 200 feet?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you can't change what's already been done. If you can't change what's already been done, then you change what the future will be. And if that business does no longer have the same owner, then they can't have that permit again. There are so many ways to ride it to meet the need of the medical that you currently have. And then any future business owner, if they're within, you know, under the 600, then no. I mean, you make the rules and I don't know. I think that thinking outside the box and figuring out how we can still honor those that already have that and then what do we do for the future, I think that you'll come to a consensus. I mean, it's not very hard, so.
Dusty, I have a question for you. The way it stands now, Joe opens up a business and gets his license and then he goes under, he's bad at his business and moves on. But before he goes under, he sells to Sally. Does Sally, in the case of marijuana, get to continue with that business if they buy it, going concern? Or if Joe just, I guess that's one scenario. The other one is if Joe just up and goes out of business, can Sally have a vested right in buying that property and starting again?
And I want our city returning to be paying close attention so I don't say something that's incorrect. My understanding is, first off, the cannabis permits are a little bit different than your typical other land use permits that we issue. So for instance, with cannabis permits, I cannot as an owner transfer my permit to Sabrina, you know, versus if I had a special permit to operate a gas station, I could, that permit's tied to the land, I could, I could transfer that to Councilmember Roger, I guess. So it's not as simple as, I don't want to own the business anymore, I'm going to give the permit to somebody else. Typically with non-conforming uses, so for instance, if the council chose to create a 600-foot buffer, you know, or some other regulation that made the current use continue to be legal but, but non-conforming, right? Planning jargon, legal non-conforming use. In this situation, it'd be non-conforming because it's within a 600-foot buffer now. Typically you have one year to, before you lose that non-conformity. So for instance, let's say there's a gas station in a zoning that it was allowed at the time when it was approved, but now there's a change in zoning and it's not allowed there anymore. If that gas station goes out of business, somebody can reestablish that business under the same non-conformity within a year. I'm not sure if that's the case with the cannabis permit or not regarding the year timeframe for somebody else to come on and make use of a previously permitted site.
Go ahead. I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not speaking for Jim, but I'm just saying if someone were to, typically in this industry, you do make substantial increases in value to the property to increase not only your current business, but its current profitability and ability to sell that business. And as such, if you do invest in the land and in the facilities on the land and then your rights are taken away, that could be problematic for the future, for the ability to sell because then that's, that's the value of the business is your future improvement. So I would argue that, I mean, I believe that that would be the case.
Makes sense.
Just to clarify what I was saying before, I think we did consider this when we boosted up to this ordinance and that we looked at what the impacts would be off-site and the regulatory framework that we established and that those were reasonable buffer areas that we determined at the time and also looking at the map in terms of, you know, how big a chunk of various places in the city would, would be affected by going from a 200-foot to a 600-foot. So I'm very comfortable with us continuing to have the same buffer areas. I'm just saying that I think it is fair to bring that up at the public hearing. It's fair for city council members to disagree about this. And if so, we still have to consider the vested interests that people have already invested in, in our existing ordinance. But I, I feel like the change from medical only to both medical and adult use is really facing reality that it's, you know, basically the barn door's already been open, adult use is already happening, it's legal statewide, and why shouldn't our businesses be able to compete in that market and have the expectation that if they're following all our rules? So I'm just saying, that's my opinion. We can disagree about that and it's perfectly reasonable to say, you know, we could reconsider it, but I personally think we're comfortable with it.
I think if we're going to have a discussion about changing the buffers, we need to make sure that it is listed on an agenda so that public who would like to speak to that issue know that it's being spoken about. I feel like right now, tonight, we're even kind of walking on dicey territory by having that as a conversation that wasn't duly noted on the agenda. I agree with you that it is an important part of this conversation, but if it's not on the agenda, it doesn't give all of the public a fair chance to come and speak to it.
Well, and again, I don't feel comfortable changing buffers tonight. I appreciate everybody that's spoken, but I tell you, I've visited a couple of these indoor facilities and I, I wouldn't be comfortable, obviously, with a dispensary right near a school. I think that's not something I would ever approve nor I ever envisioned. Honestly, I didn't think that given the owner of the property, the debt would ever be the issue even for a, even a cultivation facility. But I'll tell you that most cultivation facilities that, again, we imagine visiting and odor was the big issue I had in mind because I don't want to see the stuff grown outside, whether it's hemp or marijuana, I don't want to smell it from a quality of life thing. Even former council member Ornstein, that was a big issue for him and yet he pushed the council to go in this direction at some point. But most of the places had security. They were, I think the points, I guess I was trying to get at is right now, you can have a place locked down very well that you can't smell and really, hopefully you won't be able to see neon signs that say pot grown here, but people might know it's there, but your neighbor could be getting his delivery from the equivalent of Uber Eats, I guess Uber Smokes, and deliver it however many times he wants it. And we don't have a say anymore, at least unless this lawsuit goes in and play because it was brought up by some of the agents, or some of the cities. I went to the League of Cities where there were some cities that didn't want any cannabis in their city and they feel betrayed by the state and the governor for signing that. And I actually respect that because if you allow it, you allow it. And in our case, we allowed it, but we wanted to regulate it. Some places didn't want it and that should be their vested right as a city not to allow it. And some like San Francisco, honestly, in the meeting I went to, they were more concerned with their businesses losing a market share than I was San Francisco for you. And so, but I've seen the cultivation facilities and we have the police department inspect, et cetera, and they're kind of locked down. That's, and with state track and trace, eventually what you're going to have is, honestly, I think we're waiting on the state to get a lot of things in place. And eventually, I think the positive I've seen with this, and again, I don't smoke it, we'll probably never smoke it, guys, sorry, but is that it's driven the price of bare land out in the county down. It's caused, yeah, that's what I hear from the realtors, that bare land prices aren't going like what they were before. It's, it's part of the, this whole going legal thing. Apparently there's a big push from the legal folks for law enforcement to go after those that are growing illegally. And within a city, I don't want to see folks going past what they can't do from a code enforcement standpoint. I don't want you growing outside your, what is it, greenhouse or whatever, you're not supposed to do so. So. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Gary Banderberg. I live right here in Willets. I'm the lab director for Boxcar Manufacturing, right down the road here. In the words of Proposition 215, guys, Dennis Perone, all recreational use has medical effects. I don't know if everyone agrees with that, but it actually, there are medical, there are medical effects of all cannabis use, whether you're aware of it or not. I want to speak to the type seven, type seven manufacturing and the safety around that. We built this manufacturing facility and spent quite a bit of coin, almost all exclusively at Mendo Mill here, trying to pump up our economy here. And we, if we adopt a type seven, we'll be hiring another five employees to help with extraction. And so that's about, excuse me, about it. Thank you.
All right. Ma'am?
My name's Jeannie King and you've heard from me before and I can feel your eyes are all right now. It's Jeannie again. None of you have ever asked me why I feel so strongly about marijuana. My phone number is 841-7885. I would be glad to sit down with any of you with a, for a one-on-one conversation and explain that to you. Jerry's right is that not all municipalities in California have agreed to incorporate marijuana businesses into town, into their towns. Actually, two-thirds of California municipalities prohibit marijuana businesses setting up shop. Only 161 of California's 482 municipalities and 24 of the 58 counties have opted to allow commercial cannabis activity of any sort. So I think it's sort of a smokescreen to hide behind, well, the state does this and the state does that because it was this council, maybe not this exact configuration, this council, to, to agree to let the camel get its nose under the tent here, even though it was. it was in here for a while. So I'm here as an individual, I'm on the school board, but I'm not here as a member of the school board, I'm here as an individual. So the Center for Disease Control announced that 153 cases of severe lung illness linked to vaping, including one death, have happened within the last two months in the United States. The commonality, which has just come out in all of these cases, is that they were vaping THC. The LA Times reports that living near marijuana dispensaries makes use more likely to use, a study finds. The Washington State University study shows offspring of pregnant rats exposed to THC have impaired development. From the Sacramento Bee, pot use among pregnant women is on the rise, and... Almost half, this is from a study from 2013, almost half of patients hospitalized with cannabis psychosis were diagnosed with schizophrenia within eight years. This is from a 2018 study in England, teenage cannabis use roughly tripled the risk of psychotic symptoms, and so on. What these businesses, these businesses are not going to tell you the truth, because they want to make money in this town, they're not going to tell you the whole truth about marijuana. And I think that this council deserves treatment of this by really taking a look at the research with your attention and your serious consideration, rather than just...
You're on time, Jeannie.
Yeah, well, anyway, it's the tort lawyers that are going to get these businesses here, because once they become an industry, the tort lawyers are going to go after them
Jeannie, you're out of time.
For product liability, medical malpractice.
Jeannie, you're out of time, we have got another speaker.
Yeah, you let another person speak, again and again and again and again and again. Anyway, 841-7885, if any of you are interested by why I feel so strongly about marijuana.
If you could state your name.
Hi, my name is Lydia Locas. What I'm hearing here tonight is that we're not worried about how close we are to the schools with the marijuana industry. I've also heard that we worry about what the business owners need, and we're worried about our economy, but when are we going to start worrying about our children, because they are our future economy? And the more exposure we give kids to things like alcohol and marijuana, the more likely they are to use them, just like the previous person said. And I understand that if the state says 200 feet is okay, it doesn't mean we as Willets have to do that. So I also agree with the previous speaker that we can maybe consider the 600 for future permits that are given out. And I wanted to ask a question about the smell. Mayor Gonzalez, you mentioned that if the smell is detected, the permit could be revoked.
That's one of the conditions, and Dusty could speak too.
Okay. I'm wondering how it will be determined where the smell is coming from, and how you will know that it's from the dispensary? And the reason I ask that is because I used to live...
Dispensary or marijuana facility?
One or the other, well, I don't, it's good, it might be an issue.
I would presume a dispensary wouldn't have the smell.
Okay, I'm, okay, like you, I've never smoked it either. But the reason I ask that is because I lived on Franklin Street for quite a few years, and I couldn't keep my windows open, because the smell was always so strong on that street. So I'm wondering how you will determine where the smell is coming from? Does it smell different? I'm not sure how that all works, but if we can get some clarification on that? And if it is detected, how will it be regulated or addressed? So those are some of the questions I have for tonight, and I'm looking forward to the next conversation on this topic. Thanks.
Dusty, could you speak to that? I'll just add that before the legal businesses came into play, it was catch-as-catch-can with the city's ability to go after folks, because it was a code enforcement issue, and there was a lot of work that went into that, and we had very little funding to go after it, because we had one person playing double duty doing that part.
Yeah.
Whereas with this industry, and Dusty can speak to that, is that we get to basically bill folks for basically regulating them.
Yeah. And I'll just speak to a real example. We've received two odor complaints that were targeted to some of our legal cannabis cultivation operations. One of them, we were able to go to the site and verify that the odor was coming from the legal facility. And basically, the way that we did that is, we went up to the building, and we actually couldn't smell it from outside the building, but the complainee was someone that shared that same building space. And we were quickly able to determine that their dividing wall didn't go all the way to the ceiling. So it was, in that situation, it was very obvious that, yes, this is an odor complaint, this is inconsistent with the ordinance, and we were able to notify the applicant. Within 48 hours, they were able to deal with it. We followed up multiple times with the neighboring tenant, and they were appreciative of the quick response, and so that situation was alleviated. We had another odor complaint that was alleged against the facility. We went and visited that facility, and were able to go inside the building, go outside the building, and were able to determine that there's no odor coming from outside the building. We then drove around the neighborhood, and we smelt marijuana. We knew it wasn't coming from the legal grow, we assumed it was coming, it was an illegal grow from one of the residential houses. We were not able to confirm exactly where it is. We can't just go walking on people's land and looking over people's fences and, you know, asking to go inside people's houses and all that kind of stuff. But we do continue to receive a number of odor complaints to illegal cannabis operations, people growing in their backyard typically, and we respond to those with typical code enforcement fashion. We go through the formal process that's been established, and a lot of times, those folks take, alleviate the situation and remove those plants. When they don't, then they accrue daily fines from us.
And so, Dusty, the process for, and ma'am, the process for, like, an illegal one would be that you couldn't, like, I couldn't go to your house and just walk on in, or have a right to walk on in, I would have to get an inspection warrant or a criminal warrant in the case that they thought it was an illegal thing. But in the case of a commercial one, that's part of their permit, they have to allow you to go in and inspect, is that correct?
Right.
So they kind of waive that right by becoming legal, so...
Just to clarify for the public and anyone who hasn't read the ordinance, can you explain what the ordinance says about cannabis cultivation outdoors within city limits?
So you cannot grow outdoors in the city limits, whether it's for commercial or personal purposes. You can grow for personal use, and those provisions are within the ordinance, but it has to be within a safe and secure structure, meaning you have to be able to protect the potential nuisances from causing issue with the neighbor. Yeah.
Larry had a question.
Not of Dusty.
Oh, okay.
I just want to say, I've been in this community for a lot of years, a whole lot of years. I taught high school for 35 years, and I retired 21 years ago. When I was teaching high school, there was marijuana in City of Willets anywhere you wanted to look. And I used to ask the students that I had in there, not that I was going to tell who what said, who what said what. I said, "If I want a beer, can you get me a beer?" And they would say, "Yes." And I would say, "I want marijuana, can you get me marijuana?" And the kid would say, "The beer's going to take me probably an hour or two to get it. Marijuana, I can get you in about 40 seconds, as soon as I can get to my locker, or to somebody's locker that has it, okay?" Now, that is actually true, and you can say whatever you want. Marijuana is not brand-new to Willets. We've had it for 50 years, and people have been in Willets for 50 years, growing marijuana, selling it to whoever they want to sell it to, or the black market, or whatever. So these people aren't brand-new with marijuana. What you're saying is that now, we have regulations on it, which we never had before, never had before, before it was legal in the city, in the state of California. You could grow mari... When I first got on the council 12 or 13 years ago, you could grow marijuana in your backyard, and all you had to have around it was visqueen. We cleaned that up to have, you had to have it contained, so that your neighbors couldn't smell it. And they've done a pretty good job of that. But what I'm saying is, that if you want a 200, you know, foot thing from Remco, you have to smell Remco to see that it's, you know, not, I mean, I could grow corn there that stinks. But I'm just saying that it's not anything new that wasn't here before you were born, Amy.
Yes.
So I'm just saying, at least now, we have...
Excuse me, Dusty.
And I'm sorry for yelling at you, because I'm deaf and I can't hear, but you have to know that we have come a really long ways with cannabis, because we have constrictions that you can't do it here, and you can't do it there, and you can't do it here. I was one of the people that pushed for dispensaries to be out of, at different zones, out of the city, because there has to be a place where I can take my kids to have something to eat, go to the movie, or whatever, and there's not a dispensary next to it. And that's a thing that I pushed for. Now, if you want to raise, these gentlemen want to raise cannabis, we've had cannabis for 50 years. I mean, they want to do it because the state said we can do it. So I'm just amazed. If these people have, whatever their process is, if it stinks, we're going to close them down. I mean, if a person is next door and is growing pot, all you have to do is call the city, and we'll come out and check it. We have people that do that. I'm sorry for the lecture, that's a schoolteacher in me, but I'm just saying that that's true. I mean, you have to be real. And I know that, I don't smoke it, I've never smoked it. I can't say my kids haven't smoked it, because I don't know every place it's ever been. And I can say truthfully that Larry Stransky hasn't smoked it, and Virginia Stransky hasn't smoked it. Those are the two people that I know for a fact that haven't done it. I don't know about the rest of these people, but I know about those two people.
Way to throw us into the bus.
I'm just saying, you have to be real. Thank you. I'm sorry for yelling, talking too loud.
And I want to point out that Larry isn't yelling for the sake of yelling, he is deaf. So...
Please don't put me out there.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. So I'm here today because I really want to urge you to, you know, I hear what you're saying, and just like you said, that you wanted to have a place where you can take your kids to the movies, or go out with your children without having a dispensary next door. I want the same thing. I don't want marijuana grown near a school, and I don't want a dispensary near a school. And I think that what Amy was saying is that if we can increase the buffer for that now, and honor what's already in place, you know, to please keep our children in mind. Our children are vulnerable, and the fact that they're going to be next to a marijuana grow site, we're not talking about one or two plants, right? We're talking about more than that, that, you know, especially in a middle school, their brains are developing, they're going to, whether it's enclosed or not, somebody's going to come out of that place, you know, either smelling like marijuana, having marijuana. And I really want to urge you to please think about our children. Our children are the most important thing that we have in our community, and to keep them in mind when we're putting these laws into place. I'm not saying that we should not have any marijuana dispensaries or places where we grow it, but why does it have to be right next to a school, a middle school? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up here. Did you want to?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and a question. Larry, just for clarification, were you stating that you voted no for dispensaries?
No, I did not say that.
Okay.
I voted originally for nothing, and then I started reading about it, talking to people about it, and this was about the medical marijuana at that particular time. And I changed my mind, and I talked out in the open, out at the diocese, and told people in the community that I had changed my mind, because people had come to me about their children having seizures, and that the marijuana had helped them. And I had a number of people that came to me and talked to me, and that changed my mind, and I told it publicly.
He was referring to the C1 zone?
Well, I was just a little confused, because she, like, talked about not wanting to go to the movies or elsewhere with a dispensary. Anyway, I was confused.
That's why the different zones is where we have the dispensaries versus not.
Because it's not next to the movie theater.
Not anywhere near downtown.
All right. My other thing I want to state this evening is that it is very aware to me that I am the lone vote, but I think it's important for the council to remember that each of us represents the public. We had a platform that we ran on, we told the public what our intentions were, we said that we would represent them, and that the council has made decisions that have saturated our community with cannabis, and for me, that's the bigger issue. We know that cannabis has been out there, but we're making decisions that are further saturating our community and changing the culture of our community, and you have to acknowledge that that does have both positive and negative effects on our community. And it bothers me a bit that I don't feel like one council member who's not in favor of further saturating our community with cannabis isn't a fair representation of the community as a whole. There's five of us, so are we to say that only 20% of our community, for example, is not okay with this? I would argue that it's a little different, and particularly, if I was to sit here and there would be five of us that were in favor, that would really bother me if I was sitting out in the public, because there is no other viewpoint to consider. So although my viewpoints may be irritating, frustrating, I hope you respect the fact that somebody has to speak for other members of the community who can't sit here at this table. And I know that I was elected, and I ran on that platform, and that is my role and my responsibility. And when we step down from here, we can be friends, we can say hi, and we're going to differ on different issues, and I definitely differ with the rest of the council on this issue, but we also have to be able to work together on other issues. So I hope that on this issue, we can keep it above this issue, and not hold grudges, because I'm so adamantly against maybe what the majority wants on this particular topic.
I appreciate you saying that, Sabrina, and I think that you are right on, that we don't all have to agree, and that we can continue to treat each other with respect and appreciate that we're coming from a point of view that is based on our life experience, on the people that we've spoken to, on our efforts to look into the issues that face us. I deeply respect that in you, that you hold your ground and you have your position that you believe in. What I take issue with is the suggestion that if we don't agree with you on this issue, we're not caring about the kids in the community. And I think that when we look at this issue, when we look at what some of these businesses have done to mediate the effects of their business on the community, we have to treat them like any other business. They're tax-paying citizens who are following the rules, they're following the letter of the law, from our fire chief, from our code enforcement, from the ordinance that was crafted by the council you sat on. And even though you didn't agree with it, you were part of the body that listened to the public, weighed the information, and made a decision. the public, weighed the information, and made a decision. And I just think that's what we all do, and we all care about this community, and we all care about the children of the community. Hello, they're the reason that we have a community. I just, I, I really feel like we're all trying to do the best that we can, and we're trying to be reasonable, and, and look at people who are playing by the rules. That's, that's how I look at it. And I know that's not the popular opinion with some people in the community, and I do, I really try to listen open-mindedly and hear the concerns, and I also think that we have to be realistic. This is a part of the community, and by regulating it, by having it controlled, we are doing our part to make sure that our community is protected, and isn't just being run ramshod over by people doing all kinds of things illegally. They're following the rules. I appreciate that.
Madge, Larry?
Well, I agree. First of all, I agree that, that we can disagree about things and still respect each other, and, you know, sometimes we have a lone vote, or it's two to three, and we still go on, and we still put the city, or our, you know, our best effort to make the city a good place to live, that's always first in our minds, regardless of whether we vote yes or no for anything. So that, that's where this ordinance came out of, you know, a pretty long struggle as to whether we were going to move this direction or not. A lot of the perception about cannabis has been based on the fact that for so many decades, it was an underground, black-market thing, and part of the, you know, people misuse it, and of course, people can still misuse it, I'm not saying that that's gone away, but it was all, you know, not, not regulated. The crime involved in that was, was huge, and still is. There's a lot of black market out there, and there's a lot of crime out there. Having it regulated, the, the ordinance also has very strong provisions for security. So it's, it's a much, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can to make this a legitimate, respectable business that follows the rules, and to, yeah, to protect our community from some of the potential negative effects. But I think it's also that cannabis, you know, way back at the federal level, got made illegal partly for really stupid reasons, like to help the alcohol industry, or to help the plastic rope industry, because they couldn't grow hemp to make rope anymore. And, I mean, there's all sorts of history involved here for why it became a Class 1 drug that didn't really make any sense. And we're struggling now with the historical heritage that we're trying to turn a corner, and, and we're having growing pains around it. We're, we're struggling with that. But I think over the next few years, we're going to find that our, our industries here are very respectful of, of our community, and if they aren't, and they aren't following the rules, they're not going to last. They're going to be found to be inconsistent. So anyway, I, I think cannabis as a, as a Class 1 drug is probably really ancient, what's the word I'm looking for? It's, it's sort of hysteria that was drummed up, and when you consider the ill effects of tobacco, and alcohol, and pharmaceuticals, legal pharmaceuticals, there's a lot of stuff out there. People do have to pay attention, and they have to, you know, not do things that are self-destructive, and we have to protect our kids, and educate them about what's healthy and what's not. We're not talking about opening up cannabis to minors. The dispensaries is twenty-one years are over, and by having it be regulated, we have a little more control over that. So, you know, it's not perfect, but I think it's, we're doing the best we can, and, and I really do appreciate hearing from the public, because it's, we're, we're trying to thread the needle through this, this territory that's new, and, you know, trying to get it right. And it's not easy, and I really appreciate that on the council, we hear from Sabrina as well as from the public, to keep that balance in mind.
Larry, do you have anything else? Anything else? Okay. You'll go over to him, I want to speak. All right, I'll, I'll just say a couple of things. One is, I came here concerned about the Type 7-6. I wanted to hear from our fire chief to see whether he was comfortable or not. And, sorry, industry folks, but he's the guy I want to make sure, he's, he's my local source and the person I trust, and, and that was one thing. The other thing was, I was a little curious about the language regarding the storefront thing we dealt with earlier, and I think we, we kind of beat that horse. As we did this, I, I didn't lie to people. When I ran for office, I said I was going to look at the cannabis industry. I did not, to say as, one person who said, "I'm going to look at this, and I may look at recreational in the future," et cetera, I was very upfront. I do care about the kids, I've been doing kid things all my life, and, in fact, I, at my expense, I took my van and took city people, fire chief, I think, rode with me, and when we went out and checked some facilities out, because concerns I had were safety, odor, security of the neighboring areas, and, and employees. I had questions of employees, those were the folks I talked to. Young people working at facilities, and job generation, et cetera. I, I had all these things in mind, because I, whether it was okay in San Francisco, or we went there, we went to Sonoma County, and I, we sat outside a dispensary, I talked with clients, I think they thought, man, what's this creepy old guy talking to me about? But I wanted to ask questions. I talked with their employees, because I wanted to make sure that they would be safe, and what sort of security, et cetera. I talked with other law enforcement agencies, because I was curious, and by and far, what I got is, we worried about the legal folks, because they're jumping through all our hoops. It's the folks out there on the fringe that are still out there, that, that we're concerned about. Going back to my law enforcement career, I always believed in following the law, and in fact, I, at one point, when we were dealing with the illegality of it, I actually went down and talked to the U.S. Attorney's Office, because I wanted clarification. I'll ask any of you in this room if you ever went to that far, and had to do that, because I cared about my community, I still do. I was born and raised here, I've already bought my plot where I know I'm going to be buried. I can tell you that's how long I, I think I intend on being here, and so I do care about my community, and like I told, not you gentlemen in particular, but the marijuana folks, I want to make sure that they're following rules, and that's usually my first question when I hear about something. I say, "Were they following the rules?" "Yeah, they were," et cetera, and, because I want to make sure that Dusty, the city folks, have that power. Because I got tired of code enforcement chasing after folks, and sometimes levelling fines. We had some folks in town who would just come in and pay the $20,000 fine. I had no control over that per se, other than some fines that they were able to pay. I feel I got more control over this gentleman's business than I did that, and, and so, while I did not intend or foresaw, based on the folks operating there next to the school, I would hope if they don't conform and they don't follow the rules, that I'm pretty quick to say, "Shut them down." That's part of this, so. Got to tell you, this is the kind of town where I think people do care, and I thank you all for coming out to speak today. I don't devalue anything you've said, or anything like that. I may have a different opinion to some level, but I kind of feel like I've jumped through all these hoops to get to where I'm at today, and if folks don't like how I vote today, or tomorrow, et cetera, then run for office, and you know what? I, I give it my best to try and do it, but I think I look at things, and also, I do care about the kids, and just because I vote one way or not doesn't mean I don't. I've donated a lot of money over the years to kid causes, I volunteered, used to coach soccer, too. I don't think I did it because I hated kids, and I help out at different things, and all of that, because I'm a part of this community. And that is the lecture I've given a lot of the cannabis folks, is if you want the community to embrace your industry, you need to get out there, and there's a lot of need in our schools. And if you want to help out there, you know, I'm trying to think of what that website is, that you can donate to teachers.
Donors Choose.
Donors Choose, and.
In your own books.
And, you know what, I don't care, I don't think they'd care who donated. But I mean, put your money where your mouth is, folks, and be good citizens in this community. At this point, in my, in my mind, you're always going to be on sort of a probationary part, because it's going to be part of you following the rules. If you're not, then I hope to be on this council long enough to make sure you're not in business if you're not following the rules, so that's what I got to say. So I'm going to bring it back to, we're looking for a motion? So, no, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we need to, a motion should be to introduce the ordinance as subject to changes council recommended, and to wait for formal reading.
I saw a motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Kathy, vote?
That's my own kind, yes. I agree, it's no, strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Or Gonzalez.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Can you just clarify if it's going to be on the next, clarify really quick what the motion meant just now?
Yep, it's moving forward. Will it be on the next one?
As in, to talk about it for public comment, or no?
Yeah, there'll be another opportunity for public comment.
Will that be in two weeks or not?
It, it will either be the, the next scheduled meeting, or the, or the one after.
So is anybody here that needs to be notified, and isn't already on email or whatever, want to let Kathy know that you want to be notified when that hearing is going to be?
Is there an email list, something? I saw something, oh, okay.
Or not?
No, we don't.
Look at the website, it should be put in the paper for all public to see.
So Dusty, do you, you actually maintain, I believe, maintains a list of people who wish to be contacted over a certain subject?
Yeah, if you want to contact me or give me your information tonight, certain folks have asked to be notified anytime there's any cannabis matters that come on the agenda, so.
There is a publication requirement, at least five days before the meeting in which a council adopts an ordinance, it has to be a summary of the ordinance published in the newspaper.
Now, you are going to adopt this tonight?
No.
Okay, great.
No, that was never the intention, just like the, and I wanted to clarify the, yeah, the reading thing, again, it wasn't nefarious, it's just, we have this discussion tonight, just like we did today, and we'll have it again.
Okay, thank you.
I would also point out to all members of the public that Sabrina and I both are active on Facebook, and regularly list topics that are going to be discussed on city council agendas.
Okay. Item 3C, discussion regarding retaining earthquake insurance coverage for the city.
Yes, Stephanie Gerbrandt, Sierra, city manager, this is a discussion, I'm asking for some advice from council. As I've discussed in the past, insurance premiums for the city have gone through the roof this year. We have recently realized that our earthquake insurance coverage has pretty much doubled, and I began to ask REMF, we're part of a public risk insurance pool, because we are self-insured, with the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. Earthquake insurance is actually something that we don't have pool insurance from, it's, it's insurance that's purchased for us through REMF. Because that, there are many of us who do not purchase earthquake insurance for our homes, because popular belief is that if a major earthquake event is to happen, there would be some sort of assistance through FEMA, through the state. I did ask our general manager of REMF about this, and whether, what would the ramifications be, and did anybody else carry, or consider not carrying earthquake insurance? Because I, I sort of thought it odd that we were, we signed up earthquake insurance. Her response was interesting, because my, she had, I caught her just as she was leaving a big meeting about earthquake insurance, and what she said is that, interestingly, REMF members are all carrying the earthquake insurance, however, school districts basically have never carried earthquake insurance, because she had just learned this information from this informational meeting, and more and more people, especially public entities, are dropping their earthquake insurance coverage, in a recognition that in an earthquake event in California, there would likely be public assistance, like FEMA or something like that. Fire insurance is a little different, because it can affect one community rather than a group of communities, but earthquake insurance, she sort of agreed, is becoming somewhat of a thing of a past, and people are starting to drop it. Because I'm trying to just save money anywhere I can, I would actually recommend that we drop it, it would save us some money, and, but I, I didn't want to take that action unless, until I got some feedback from y'all, or if you wanted more information, I can go try to seek that. Yes?
Do we have any examples of other communities that have experienced, in California, that have experienced an earthquake, and the state stepped in and gave them aid, or did the city have to come up with matching funds, did they repair? Are there any examples we can?
I, I can certainly look for those, that's a, that's a fair question. And one thing I, I did forget to say is the, what also troubled me is our deductible. Our deductible is, is $100,000, or 5% of the loss, whichever is more, which was very troubling to me, because that's a huge deductible. So that was, that was what I did learn. So if we had, if we, so this, I have also learned that City Hall, I have heard from the last couple building inspectors, that the way this building is constructed, it is very earthquake secure because of the shape of it, and the cement, and all that good stuff. I think it's, it's more the other facilities we're looking at. But I can certainly look for examples in other communities.
Would, would delaying, what are you asking for direction, or about?
Asking for direction, we actually have it, we are actually enrolled in earthquake insurance, it's right, currently, and so it would be something I would stop. And so we could stop it at any time, and sort of stop the meter running, and then we would get reimbursement, and I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. So, so there is no time limit. We could stop it today, we could stop it in a month, it's just a way to sort of stop the clock ticking. I did just think it was interesting that more and more jurisdictions are giving it up, and school districts, they had to give it up a long ago because of cost.
I like the idea of saving money, but we know that we're on a fault line, and I just want to know, it's, it's important to me to see their examples, and make sure that we're not missing, we're not learning from somebody else's mistakes, or that we are learning from somebody else's. Yeah, yeah, we're learning from someone, it's getting late, sorry.
And maybe even a call to FEMA, just to say, by chance, we didn't have it, is there a penalty, et cetera, because of our deductibles, et cetera? I'm not sure.
If there's, if there's an emergency declared, they pay. That's a thing. It doesn't matter whether we have insurance or not.
Okay.
I mean, one thing that was very nice is that in our PSPS event, which our server got blasted, we went to a seminar to see whether, if we had any recoverable expenses, but other people actually, there was all this fire damage, and FEMA came in to pay that, and we just sort of assumed that it didn't cover us, and I was like, wait a second, we blew a server, let's check. And sure enough, they came in, and they just covered it, and they were really easy to work with.
Oh, really?
So they actually paid for over about $35,000 worth of blown computers during our.
What's the percentage on FEMA reimbursement? I mean, it's not a one-to-one.
It depends on the events, it's not one, it's not one-on-one, they paid for an awful lot of this one, because they take into account your staff time, and because it was in-kind, and we put so much staff time into sort of helping with the process, I think that covered our percentage.
I would agree with Sabrina's comments on that, that it would be, I would, in general, want to save the money, and I think, especially with such a high deductible involved, it may not be all that advantageous to continue to be covered, so my tendency would be, let's stop, you know, stop paying for that coverage, but it might be good just to know.
I can call around, if that's the will of the council.
Yeah, because there's other cities that have had earthquake.
I, I think, yeah, I'll call around to people who have experienced earthquakes, I mean, Northridge, but all of that was quite a long time ago.
Probably right now, it's been the folks down in Salinas, and.
Right, we have a central.
And Alamo County, I guess, that.
Right.
But can we bring this back, like, in two weeks?
Sure. Two weeks or four weeks, it's, it's, I'm just.
Whenever you have information, I think.
Yeah, I can bring it back.
I think at least that, part of our due diligence, if, you know, it's like eighty, twenty kind of thing, then I'm.
Yeah, and if FEMA is likely to deny such a claim. Yeah, and if FEMA is likely to deny such a claim, then that would weigh a little bit, but.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see.
Sounds like a good idea.
What's happening in Southern Central Valley, yeah, I just don't know anyone who's covered by earthquake insurance for your personal house anymore.
And it went up quite a bit, is that correct?
It went, it doubled.
So.
So.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And, any, I guess I'll read this, oh, no, we have consent calendar on there, item 5A, council minutes, August 14, 2019. Do I have?
I saw a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And right to appeal, people who are dissatisfied decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by the court. The city's adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days. The time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Commissions, agencies, city manager, any other reports?
Yes, I have a few things. A council member asked, actually, the vice mayor asked me about how the trees were doing in the watershed, and I wanted to do a quick report on those. As you know, according to our grant, the requirement was to plant 190 trees per acre. Responded, Tom responded, Tim, Tim, responded that the trees are doing well, it was expected that they were going to have a 50 to 75% survival rate. Generally, they look pretty good, but he's gonna, they're, they're actually looking at it this week again. However, there is a, I quote, "a high level of competing grasses and forbs." And I asked him what a forb was, and the forb is not a grass and it's not woody. That's all he said, I can't give you any more information what forb is, but the trees are doing okay. We also went to, Kathy and I attended the finalist competition for Startup Mendocino. The finalists competed last Sunday in Ukiah, it was a wonderful event. Eighty-two startup businesses competed, the winner was the Forest People. They won $10,000 for their startup business in making mushroom jerky. So, they, the presentations were wonderful, the judges were actually three people from the Small Business Administration who came out to do the judging, they asked really good questions. I was able to talk to one of them, actually, on Monday, they came by to see me and to talk about what programs could be available for the city of Willets. I did learn during that meeting that the city of Willets is a hub, which means a historically, which is a zone for historically underutilized businesses, which means that if you are a manufacturer or have products in the Willets area, you can actually have a preference in federal government contracting. That is very good for manufacturing organizations. It's funny, I actually joked with him a little bit about how, well, I guess hemp wouldn't count, would it? And he says, "Well, no, it wouldn't, but hemp would," because hemp is actually legal under federal law, so if there was a hemp manufacturing concern, that could actually be certified as a, as a hub business under the federal regs, and they would get a preference for any hemp products. I thought that was fascinating. I do plan to reach out to the manufacturing companies I know.
Does that mean that if the federal government wanted hemp?
Yes.
That they would be the leading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hemp has become mainstream.
Hemp has become very mainstream, yes.
To make sure I understood you clearly.
Yeah, because he said hemp, I said, "So hemp?", and he's like, "Absolutely." And so, I think that the city of Arcata, the part of that is in a hub zone as well, they have a concern that manufactures rubber rafts, and they have a sole source contract with the federal government because they're in a hub zone, which is great. So, it is something to market for the city of Willets, that we are in a historically underutilized zone, so pass it along. We continue to gather information on the PSPSs. Belinda Smith in our office has been calling businesses to see whether they'll be open in case of a power shut-off. I am very disappointed to see that today, there are no gas stations who are going to be prepared with a generator in the case of a PSPS, which means that the closest gas station in the case of a, of a power shut-off, looks like it's going to be Redwood Valley, although Brown's Corner is, it looks like they're trying, but they're not there yet. But if you want to try to urge local gas stations to go get a generator, that would be great, because we, they will have lines out the door if it's announced.
Do you think it could be because they're not sure how powerful of a generator they need? Do we have any idea what's keeping them from?
We don't. Belinda was just calling basically all the businesses, and I was actually going to try to meet with Safeway myself and just say.
Find out what their obstacle was.
You're Safeway, come on. So, we'll, we'll see, it's, yeah, I'm, I was actually really surprised, because they're guaranteed to get a ton of business if they have, if they have that. Also wanted to, you know, we were talking about an economic development slash revenue good government workshop with the same, I talked to actually the same person who gave our retreat last year, Rod Gould, he's experienced in all these things, we wanted to have a really concentrated time to talk about economic development. Because of some competing things, we, we haven't, his schedule became full in October, unfortunately, but he had some dates in November, and I wanted to check those with you for a workshop. He is looking at November 15th, 21st, 22nd, or Thanksgiving weekend.
I wouldn't want Thanksgiving.
I, I don't think anybody wants Thanksgiving weekend.
So, what are the dates again?
The 15th is a Friday.
Okay.
Are you talking about a weekend?
No, it's a, it's a Friday, just a, it's just like a half-day.
So, the 15th, and what's the other dates?
It would be a public meeting, it would be during the day, to, so you can have just a robust conversation about both economic, and that's November 15th, to talk about economic development, revenue issues in the city, and a little bit of a refresher on good government.
I would not be able to attend the 15th, either of those days, I can't do fourth-quarter meetings. It's my biggest season, I can't miss extra days away from work.
Got it.
November's very, I would agree, that sounds very hard.
Okay. I can press him to see if he's got something in October, I'll, I'll go back and see.
Otherwise, January.
Okay. Because I think it's really important, we have a really good discussion, and frankly, all the issues that we've had come up, and frankly, the fire safety stuff has taken a lot of effort from all of us.
If it was October, I could think of.
So, let me, let me, let me go back again and see if he can do something for us.
Friday works better for me.
What?
Friday would work better for.
Yeah, I think Friday's always, is, tends to be good for people.
Other than the 11th.
And especially since City Hall's closed, we're more able to do things in City Hall. But this would be a public meeting, so people could participate in that, okay?
I could not do the 18th, Friday, October 18th, I couldn't do that one.
Okay.
We're talking about a half-a-day?
Yeah, half-day.
Okay. I could do the 11th, but it would have to be after 10 o'clock.
And the chances are, he's not going to be available, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna figure, we'll figure it out. And maybe Kathy, if I get some more dates from him, then Kathy can call back, and, and we'll, we'll get, we'll figure out a date. I'm gonna let Kathy talk about Airport Day, Harvest Moon Festival is October 17th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Music in the Park starts September 12th. We have Wolverines' first home game, football game is this Friday, Go Wolverines. And Music on the Porch Day is the August 31st, and I, I left a flyer here, Music on the Porch Day is an international event in which people, if you play music of any kind, it's become really popular, you film yourself on your front porch, you are with friends, and you, you sign up for this website, you get a pin on the map where you are. I signed up so Willets could be on the map, so I'm going to be doing it, and hopefully other people will too. Sixty countries participated last year, and all, over 600 cities were represented in Music on the Porch Day.
Just on your own front porch?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, it's, it's celebrating music.
October 17th is the Harvest Moon?
Yes, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
Three to seven?
Yes.
Oh, early, okay.
Yes.
We're joking over here about, is it permitted till 10:00 PM, and what you tell our neighbors?
I know, well, you're right, it's actually 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM is when you're supposed to film yourself, but just, you know, no drum circles, like.
Or amplified music.
Or amplified music. But it's, it's a lot of fun, so, and Willets will be on the map, if I'm brave enough. And that's all I have. But Kathy, yes?
First of all, I would like to wish Councilmember Khan, Councilmember Strong, happy birthday. Birthday's once tomorrow, home is Monday. Happy birthday to both of you.
Mine's actually yesterday.
Oh, it's yesterday, excuse me. So, we'd like to wish you a happy birthday. And Airport Day, this year, we had a fabulous outcome. We had lots of good feedback from the community, from people that attended, they even said ours was better than some that were a little local, so we were really happy with that. The airport tenants were great, as I've said in the past, they all stepped up, they helped out, they had a say in it. We had a closing meeting last night, they gave some good feedback, things we're going to do different next year, we're going to have a kids' corner so that they can color and do all kinds of stuff, looking to possibly bring, like, games and stuff like that up there, so that they have something other to do, besides, when mom and dad still want to do this, they have something better to do. So, it's, it's been really great, lots of good feedback. It was a gorgeous day, I really can't say anything bad about it, there's, it was hot, but other than that, I think it turned out really well.
Kathy did a fantastic job.
Reach crew when I was up there was doing a nice job, they, they were holding fort with all the folks, just fascinated with it.
Everybody that came in, that flew in, the helicopter company that gave rides, they actually gave their flight at 6:25, and it ended at 3:00. So, they stayed, next year, they're going to have two helicopters, so they can give more rides, and we want to do more of a schedule in the future, so that people in the community, like Frontier Days does, and give times and stuff like that of what's going to take place. So, everybody that came and participated with their planes, and the businesses just really enjoyed it, they talked a lot about it at the end, we're not forgetting about it.
Kathy, the book juggler would be willing to donate paper plane books where kids can punch out and hold their own planes.
Wonderful.
So, call me next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very cool.
All right. Any otherbody want to talk? Nope. Come on up.
Thank you for having me up here again. I wanted to, we talked last meeting about the public safety power shutdown, so obviously there's a lot of talk about generators and generator safety. I wanted to let the council know that we, we met with Naveed Pedar, California Public Utilities Commission, he actually scheduled the meeting with us, which was nice, he was a great ear. He wanted to know what we thought would be a help to citizens, what we could present to PG&E through this process that we thought could be helpful. We've said since day one that what we've really done, and I'm gonna, I stick by this, and I'll, and I'll add to that in a minute, we've increased our fire danger, there's no question about it. And how can we reach people? We've talked about outreach for literature and that sort of thing, but we still have people doing things unpermitted, and we're, we're going to have that anyways, but how can we make things be done above board? The cost of permitting within the county is extreme for properly installing a generator. It's a lot less within the city. I've talked with Dusty about it. So, moving forward, I was asked by Pedar that if we came up with a, I'm sorry, Naveed, with a, with a solution or something that we could ask for, to go to him. So, we came up with an, a pretty ambitious idea, but we wanted to submit it anyways. What we've asked, and we've submitted this through Board of Supervisors, through their district supervisor, Hashcheck, is that PG&E offer low to no interest rate loans for the complete installation of, of generators, which would include permitting, the generator itself, meeting all the California emissions, a proper generator size for the application that's going to be used, and for the complete process. And after that process was completed, if it took $1,000 to put the generator in, obviously it would be more than that, they offer a 20% buyback at the end to entice people to purchase generators and install them in a legal permitted manner at their homes or businesses to assist with that. Like I said, that's pretty ambitious, but what we're really trying to push people to do is permit their installations at their homes. Aside from that, you're still going to have people buying generators from Home Depot or Costco and using them as they, as they see fit at their, at their homes or, or local businesses. Just the other night, we were up at 11:30, to give an example, assisting the coast, we had a gentleman with a generator accident, I'll call it, that was burned over 90% of his body. And we, there was, it was foggy on the coast, helicopter couldn't go there, we, they brought them to our pad at Station 541 on back of the road, and we made the transfer there. With that being said, fire starts small. It doesn't take a 20 KW or 25 KW line or 12 KB to, to start a fire. It only takes one little spark, and you keep in mind, public safety power shutdowns are happening during red flag warnings, the worst possible conditions that we can have for fire. Alls it takes is one of those folks hot-fueling a generator, I'm, I'm not going to say that that's what it was, because I didn't investigate it, but it only takes one person making one mistake or hooking that up wrong, the fire that happened, that they were worried about being started by PG&E lines, will just be started at the back of somebody's home. There, there really is no difference, so.
Hot-fueling is where it's been running and they try to add gas to the?
Happens every day. Two things happen with generator, for the most part, with generator accidents, hot-fueling, they leave it running, your son, go out and fill up the generator, I don't want to shut off the TV while I'm watching NASCAR, and they, they start a, they start a fire. Or, people take the generator, because they don't, they, they buy a $500 generator, it's extremely loud and it bothers the neighbors, so they put it in their garage, next thing you know, they fall asleep with carbon monoxide poisoning. Those, those things are common with generator safety. So, I, like I said, our proposal through supervisor Hashcheck was very ambitious, I'm not sure where that'll ever head, that was the proper channel, according to the CPUC. And we've asked for assistance to make, make an offer to people so they can do it right, and that will have standby power, and they can get a little break on the price, and if they could, maybe a business can't afford $20,000 for an installation, but they might be able to finance that over five years at a super-low interest rate or no interest rate, with a little incentive at 10 or 20% at the end.
You're saying it's ambitious to expect that PG&E is going to?
Yeah, I think that's asking a lot in the, in the scope of things.
But it's really actually a very, very, you know, reasonable request, so, don't undercut it by saying it's openly ambitious, but, and PG&E has enough money, they should be able to do it. And they're, they're the ones that are worried about fires.
I can't, I, I can't speak for PG&E's financial situation, but I can tell you that I would trust an installation that Davies approved in our city limits, that's through the permitting process, way more than somebody just going down and buying it and installing it themselves.
So, it, so it's really, so the Board of Supes is going to ask PG&E to?
I was told to submit our request and, and through the Board of Supervisors, so how that process works from there, I'm not exactly sure, but I, I figured that the city would like to know that, that that's what our, that's what our request was, or the way we would like to go about providing for some public safety with generators. That's all I have, thank you.
I'm going to segue on Chris here, because I was going to talk about our generator situation. Thankfully, we do have a lot of people in our community who are getting permits for their generators and doing it correctly. Obviously, we are going to have people that are doing it incorrectly. Talk about what not to do with your generator, the people that are buying the Home Depot generator, please, do not backfeed your power into your panel, do not plug it in your house, you not want to risk fire, you could damage your TV and all that stuff that you want to watch. And it also puts our utility workers at risk, life-threatening risk, if you are backfeeding that battery. Most common death from generators is carbon monoxide poisoning, do not run it in your house, do not put it in your garage, do not put it in your basement. When you're running your generator, you don't want to run your TV, you don't want to run frivial stuff, you just want to use it for your refrigerator, things like that, on necessity-based only. Most of the generators you have sit in your garage, aren't powerful enough to run your house. So, be safe, be prepared, please come to the building performance, get your permit, we will help you in every way we can. If you guys can talk one of the gas stations into getting a generator, then fantastic, we'd be happy to help. Question?
I'd just like to ask a question, I've had a couple of people tell me that they bought a generator at Home, not Home Depot, what is it called?
Costco.
No, Willets Power. One here, Willets, Willets Power. And, and they intend to run just a fridge, so. So is that, that's, I just wanted to confirm, that's a safe use? They have it outside?
Absolutely.
They have an extension cord going to the house, just plugged into the fridge and that's it? And that's all they're running?
Yes. So what you want to do is make sure your extension cord is an appropriate-sized cord for the power. Fridges don't take a lot of power. When you place your generator outside, carbon monoxide is the biggest issue and fire, obviously. Make sure it's not venting into your house, under, you have vents under your house. Make sure the exhaust is not pointing in that or towards a window. And yes, that's the safe thing to do. I mean, this is the main thing where power outage, our food, and basically things that sustain our comfort. We don't need TV. You don't need that. Need your radio for emergency stuff. But yes, that's a completely safe thing to do. There.
If you're just going to run a generator for your refrigerator, you don't have to run it 24 hours a day. You can just do it like half a day or quarter of a day or what? Do you have any idea?
Four hours. It's about the right number.
Four hours per day.
So, yeah, so basically your refrigerator, if you, you know, it's quiet in your house, you can hear your refrigerator cycle on and off. That's when it's working. When it's quiet, it's just sitting there stale. Doesn't do anything. The more you open and close your refrigerator, the more often it cycles along. During an emergency situation, you're out of power, you want to limit, but use the refrigerator. Also be prepared, if your freezer is full, it'll stay colder longer. So if you have a bare freezer, top of your fridge or side, or bottom if you're really uptown, it'll stay colder longer.
You said that you don't want to, I'm not sure the word you used, backfeed the generator into your, into your power system?
So backfeeding is basically taking the cord from your generator and plugging it into your wall outlet. And that'll electrify what's on that circuit. And it'll also electrify half of your electrical panel. And it's really, a really bad way to do it because the wire sizing for an electrical outlet is not capable of carrying the current throughout the rest of your house. And so you can start an electrical fire and you'll definitely damage some kind of electric flow in your house.
So you only want to use the generator directly to an appliance?
You want to use it as an extension cord directly to the appliance.
And that's it? Okay. So for people that don't go through the permitting process, they can at least follow that?
So the code is for a standby generator, if you want to put it to your house, you have to have a manual or an automatic transfer switch that basically stops power coming in from the utility company and transfers power to your generator. And when you transfer that power to your house, it has to be able to, be capable of supplying the load that is required for all that. And so if you're transferring power to your house panel, it has to be capable of supplying that load, which would be your house, because you can turn everything on and you got problems.
So the kind that you are getting permits for, are they whole-house?
Typically, most people are putting in whole-house standby generators, but we do have people that are basically planning on for emergency use only. And you can still put a transfer switch in without buying the generator. So we have people that, if you put the transfer switch in, you're prepared for it, and you have a place to plug it in with a transfer switch, and when that time comes, you can go and rent a generator or purchase it at that time.
We won't be available then.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Kathy, how much is our standard permit?
So, yeah, that's my main point. So our standard permit, typically it depends on the value, but a typical generator setup depending on how fancy you get, is between a hundred and $300. So it's a very reasonable permit. And you get great service with that permit from the planning department.
And how much is it from the county?
For a generator, it's a day. We get to turn around that day usually. I'm sorry, what?
What is the county charge?
You know what? It's a lot more than that, but I don't know the exact figures.
I heard it was about five grand.
Whoa. How is our generator installation status here in the city?
So we've gotten some, we have generators, we're able to operate them. We would like to put in the proper transfer switch. That has not been yet done yet, but...
We currently have quotes for that.
But we currently have quotes and probably going to start that process next week.
And we're still secure for water and sewage?
Yes, that's fine. All that's fine.
Is it a line item? Imagine for a transfer switch?
I think we figured out a place to put it somewhere. Just the line switch, the last quote we got was about $17,000.
Jerry got my humor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just very quickly, at the last meeting, I noted that we had selected the top dispensaries to move forward. At the time, I hadn't announced it to the applicants. I have now, so I'm willing to share that with the council and the public. So as the council is aware, we have a cap of allowed three dispensaries to operate within the city limits at any given time. We chose to identify a competitive process in our ordinance to select those folks that would be allowed to move forward with a dispensary application. We created a scoring system. This information's available on our website if you go to the cannabis link. And the categories that we scored were the dispensary operation plan, security plan, neighborhood compatibility plan, business plan, experience and knowledge of the operators of the facility, adequacy of capitalization for the facilities it operates, final location and enhanced product safety. The committee was made of myself, the chief of police, the assistant planner, code enforcement officer, as well as two community members. And the, the folks that were invited to continue moving forward through the process, Cure Wellness located at 1788 South Main Street, Element Seven located at 1795 South Main Street, Leaf Holding at 175 North Lenore Street. Those were the winning applications. They have been notified that they have 45 days to come in with a full application along with a fee. One or two already have, possibly one other, two others. And we've told them that they need to make use of those permits, and if they don't, that will give that spot to somebody else. So...
So two on North Main, the south end of town?
South Main Street, so Element Seven, 1795 South Main Street, that's what we all know as Brown's Corner. 1788 South Main Street is directly across the street where the storage unit facility is at. And then 175 North Lenore, that's over here on the way to the surgery. Yeah, surgery.
Thank you, Dusty. All right. Anybody else?
Council members?
Um, two things. So one is that I need to add to my report from the EDFC meeting. I hadn't reviewed my, I reported they did hire a loan officer or loan outreach person, but they also did two other pretty significant things. One of them is they have completed a Mendocino County economic assessment. And like our housing element, it has a lot of really pretty cool statistics in it about what's going on in our economy and which sectors are doing well and which sectors are not doing so well. So this is available online at the edfc.org, I believe it's edfc.org website. And the other thing that they also discussed, which I had to recuse myself from, was the wool mill in Ukiah, which has been financed through a lot of local investors, many of whom are in Willets, because it's a really, it's a boon to the whole county and especially to people that deal with either the sheep growing or, you know, using the products, the yarn and so forth. It was struggling. It was very far behind schedule. They are doing much better. They've corrected some of the equipment problems they had. They're now, you know, actually rolling along and hiring at least one staff person. So that's kind of a relief because it looked really dicey there for a while. So that was the EDFC to add to my report from the previous meeting that occurred on August eighth. The other board that I'm part of is ENSWA, the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, which also is called MendoRecycle. And the very significant thing that came up at this meeting is that the ENSWA budget is kind of right at the wire. And in order to invest in the kinds of equipment that they need in the future, they want to add a dollar fifty to the dump fee or whatever you want to call it, you know, per a ton of hazardous waste and recycling that they, that the haulers bring to them, they're going to raise their rate. So that affects all of the haulers, which includes solid waste of Willets. This has not taken effect yet. It has to be approved by the members of that joint powers authority, so it needs to be approved by our city if we was to allow ENSWA to raise their rate by a dollar fifty per ton. The city of Ukiah is doing an analysis of it, and so is ENSWA, of course. I've talked to Jerry Ward. I would like to have that on our agenda preferably in two weeks because the haulers will have to include that in their rate adjustments in January.
So normally when they ask for a rate increase, they sort of give either staff report, ENSWA actually, not ENSWA, Solid Waste of Willets sort of does the analysis?
Yes.
And so I'd need that first, and so we would need to get that by next Wednesday, be able to print that.
Okay. A rate request from Solid Waste?
Well, we'd actually have to have a staff report totally prepared by that time. We actually require staff reports on Mondays. Monday's a holiday, it's Labor Day. If I can get it by Tuesday, then I can shape it into a staff report.
Okay.
So that's very short time. If Ukiah hasn't even done the analysis yet...
Well, yeah, they said they're going to have their staff report to the city of Ukiah ready on the 29th, which is tomorrow, right?
Okay, so they've got a staff report ready...
And they're going to give it to Jerry.
And then he's going to...
And I've advised Jerry that he should...
Okay, he needs to talk to me right, right away and give me all the information.
If it can't be done two weeks, then it would be, as long as we do it in September.
Well, we, okay. We have two meetings in September.
Yeah, so it's what, you know, to alert you all that we will need to have an agenda.
Yeah, because our first meeting is September 11th, which is a year in, but then we also have one on the 28th.
All right.
The 28th, no, 28th, the 26th.
Yes. So today, MTA, typically twice a year, we go to Point Arena. But this year, because there was an item on our agenda that impacted more people inland, I decided to have it a second location, and so we had a teleconference here. It was attended by one of the supervisors, Dan Jardy, somebody from, Loretta from MCOG, as well as Richard Baker from the senior center. And we decided that for now on, we're going to add to extra meetings in Willets so that, because that was very helpful. But the thing I wanted to talk to you about is that in Mendocino County, there are five senior centers, and MTA has formed an ad hoc committee. And the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to discuss the funding. So MCOG gives MTA money, and then MTA is responsible for ensuring that our seniors have transportation. Contracts are, there's some gray area, there's some compliance issues. So the ad hoc committee, the original purpose of the ad hoc committee that we were forming was to decide whether or not MTA wanted to move forward and administer this program, even though we were receiving, we weren't receiving enough funds from the MCOG to facilitate the senior program. But then it kind of evolved and we decided that we want to be very open to the public and transparent, and senior centers wanted to have a voice at the table. So there will be myself, Dan Jardy, and Jim Tarbell that will hold this somewhere inland, and it'll be open to the public. And I'm envisioning that all five senior centers will probably be present to give some input about what they want. This could have significant impact on our, on our seniors, so I don't have any, no decisions have been made. We're just gathering as much information as possible, and I'll come back to you at a later date to let you know what it all means. That was it on MTA.
Me and Larry went to the Measure B meeting today, and I don't think they really did much, so more to come. That's all I have, so...
Do we do reports or aside from committees?
Go ahead, we got a few more.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick. Reminder, tomorrow night is the community bike ride at 5:30. We meet at Rec Grove. And that I'm hoping to hear something soon about impact fees. And with all this new business going on, and I don't want us to miss the boat, we're already a little behind, so I'm hoping that we'll hear something more about impact fees. And then I had a quick conversation today with Dan Jardy, and we were talking about City Hall. And before Stephanie came on board, Adrian had started to have the conversation with Janelle about the possibility of what might be available in terms of the city, not the City Hall.
Justice Center.
I misspoke. The Justice Center. And we both agreed that now might be a good time to start those conversations again. And I said that I would bring it up to the council this evening, that...
I think what had happened is that we were moving along, but I think they wanted us to sign on the dotted line and wanted money, and we were not budgetarily in a position to move forward.
I got the impression that now might be a good time to reopen that conversation without saying anything more. Let's just explore.
Like I said, I think at one point, we were getting mixed messages. They kind of just wanted to hand it to us, and then all of a sudden, they threw a number and we weren't in a position budgetarily to pursue, so it's kind of been...
I guess what I'm asking for the rest of you is, is that do you feel comfortable giving Stephanie direction to maybe look into it again and see whether or not it's a viable... What am I looking into?
Is purchasing the Justice Center or acquiring the Justice Center?
It was something that we were working on before you came along.
Okay.
So it doesn't mean that you have to invest a lot of time. Just start whenever opportunity presents itself.
The thought was that we would acquire the City Hall and engineering over there.
Okay.
But then...
So is that the will of the council? Does it, do you want me to do that?
I think if it's, I'd be for it if it was viable financially for us.
I mean, I would have to like look into it.
Yeah, I could talk with you. The lease agreement has changed and now we're paying $1 a year only for fifteen years.
So we, yeah, we only pay a dollar a year right now. For two hundred.
Pretty good.
And we don't have to maintain it.
And that's for thirty years.
And that's for thirty years, and we don't have any obligation to maintain it right now, so...
And the county's not doing it?
No, the county maintains it.
Yeah, yeah, they have stepped up and done a lot of stuff, but even the ADA, the window has been corrected. And they replaced stuff, they've...
Which is the impetus for the...
Yeah, how are your leaks?
I'm sorry?
How are your leaks?
Leaks?
Leaks? It hasn't been raining.
So, but there's hot water now, right?
They did work, they did do work that they expected not to leak, and I tried to bait them a bet that they...
So, all right.
Whatever you ask me to do.
I would at least open the conversation, see what they're talking about. I mean, that would be my thing.
Is there a reason why, is there, so now's the time, or is it like you can tell me privately at the meeting?
We'll have a private conversation. I don't want to let it...
Yeah, I totally get it. It's a real estate negotiation, which can be discussed privately, so...
Yeah. There's advantages for us.
All right.
One, Gooden Wilford?
Go for it.
I just gave people up here a little reminder that on this coming Sunday at seven o'clock is a pre-film about the climate crisis and in particular what we can do locally and what jurisdictions around the country are doing to try to meet the climate crisis and the Paris Agreement goals. So, and there's also two speakers and we'll have discussion.
Larry? It's 10 o'clock.
I have a Gooden Wilford. I just wanted to congratulate Suprina and Jim, who are brand-new grandparents, as was just last week. Congratulations.
All right. Good night, everybody.